Alright, thank you. Maziamobi, COA, are you the one here? Please confirm if you're the one, because I want to...
Yes, Mazisani, it's me.
Alright.
My goodness, everyone. APM Guten is from here.
There will... Alright, COA. We are starting now. Let me see your program again. Alright, welcome everyone to Oha'uku State De facto Government Town Hall Meeting, welcoming the APM of the Biafra people, Honorable Okichuko Nkere. We have to start with our national anthem according to the program here. So as you have visited Oha'uku State today, you will be well treated and expect greater things from today's visit to Oha'uku State. And here we start. We observe a minute's silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra and the time starts now. We mourn our heroes past, we celebrate them, and the heroes living as we continue to fight on to the full restoration of Biafra. Alright, we go to item number three, which is opening prayer by our Supreme Leader, Mazzi Namdekanu.
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukoki Kabiama must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chukuku Okike Abiyama who resided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from afar, our Father who art in heaven, na nyinkebine lige, kahagedin song, that your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God, and our Creator. This evening we offer these your children unto thee all over this very planet that you created. They are listening across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet. We are the inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening. This gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal, this very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onyemulimihe nina that this very gospel must be preached that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood. They have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the third year of August, as we are being failed by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have sinned? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Bikomera nyebere tineke nanonige. You must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor, and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukwa Abiyama, believe go whiter than white and whiter than snow. Oh, wozanyi si meheutineke. Is there any way that we have sinned that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago that instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth wishes to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukoki Kabiama, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweheshua who came here and said, “Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven.” Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children, and their children, and their children, as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, Chukoki Kabiama, hagefe rofe. They will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be wrath in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery, and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succor to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood, and one flesh of your children, the Ephics and the Bibios, the Ison, the Shakiri, the Isobos, and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Ige, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, Chukoki Kabiama, ni ge fegefe noso puliche. We will dance on these streets, I'm telling you. By the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory, and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra that your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for in no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. Ahadensosinebegebi wonepigebi. He says... He says... He says... My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. Ruwe ebedine owasotu. Abana boso ziomachineke. I lead indigenous people of Biafra, IBUB.
Thank you, thank you, thank you to our Supreme Leader for that warm prayers. He has guaranteed the day into the hands of Chukoki Kabiama. Alright, we come to acknowledgement of dignitaries by Alobi or Honorable Soni Apawa. Is Alobi here? COA, is Alobi here?
I can't find him. You can go ahead and take it, sir.
Alright. A very big and a warm embrace to everyone that have made it to Oha'uku De facto Town Hall Meeting today, where we gathered to present the rich cultural heritage of Oha'uku State, where we gathered to make sure the entire 40 states of Biafra understands the existence of Oha'uku State in Biafra nations. Where those that did not know that Oha'uku State exists will come to know and you will get to know everything about Oha'uku State, participation, their viability, and what they have to contribute in order for the 40 states of Biafra to become efficient and successful in all we do. Every state plays a vital role to make sure the full restoration and liberation of Biafra is achieved. Just like other states have done before and have been doing, today Oha'uku State welcomes everyone as they have broken that setback record to become a positive one. We've broken the commerce back today by making sure Oha'uku starts their town hall meeting. So we appreciate everyone that are here present, starting from our Supreme Leader I just prayed, our Prime Minister, our Acting Prime Minister, the entire Ministers and Cabinet of BRJI, the De facto Government in the homeland and entire cabinet, the Defense Forces, the Biafran people all over the globe, most especially the financially supportive Biafrans that are making things happen. We salute all of you. We salute those in the media that are doing exploit day in, day out. And we salute our international allies, those that will come to be and those that have been. And we implore everyone to remain blessed as you have all honored our invitation to Oha'uku State. I thank you all. And we welcome you in the name of Chukoki Kabiama to Oha'uku State once again. Thank you, thank you. The reps and admins of all countries doing exploit in your countries, we welcome you to this very day and we appreciate your work. And we want to see more of you in subsequent events that will turn in. Thank you so, so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, we go to this point, item number five, presentation of Kola Naut and other items. COA, over to you.
Okay, sir, we need this to be on camera.
What do you need to be on camera, your own tape today or just the picture I have? Which one?
Either, either the picture you have or we go live again.
Let me put the picture I have to see what goes on.
Okay.
Can you see? Is that what you have?
Exactly. So from the picture you can see that we have excuse me. Good. From the picture you can see that we have we have Kola. We have alligator pepper. We have garden egg, which is angara. We have palm wine, the way our ancient people used to do it in Kalabash, which in our native language is called okuro. This is the table of the event. Let me go further to make the presentation. Okay. All Biafrans, I hope I'm coming out loud. Am I coming out?
We can hear you. Go ahead, go ahead. We can hear you.
Okay, okay. All Biafrans and friends of Biafrans are specially welcome once again to this special event of APM Okichuko Nkere's visit to the De facto Government in homeland, precisely Oha'uku State in the eastern region of Biafra Confederation. Ladies and gentlemen, without taking much of the time, I will take you or rather I have taken you at this juncture to the table of this event to show and explain the items. Due to the ongoing war situation in Biafra homeland, the confused mental condition and indiscipline of some of our people in Oha'uku State, we could not provide much items as we should in today's meeting. However, we look forward and should be able to provide them in subsequent meeting. We are going natural tonight, not artificial. The ancient way, not the modern way. Taking you back or down the memory lane to reflect our origin or root, not for perfection but simply for practice. Our presentation of these items comes mostly with ancient package as you have seen, not modern as part of informing or educating the new generation about our root, our originality, our identity, our cultural and traditional heritage. The items are equally to show whom we were in the beginning, long before colonization, and to help in the rediscovery, redefinition, modernization, or improvement process of our values by ourselves, not by foreigners. Yahweheshua, which they are called Jesus Christ, in the Bible participated in the Feast of Passover and ate his last supper or meal with his followers. He took a piece of bread and his body and a cup of wine as his blood, blessed them and told his followers to eat in his presence and continue to eat often in his absence as a covenant and in remembrance of him. I want to tell you tonight that Yahweheshua and his followers performed and continues to perform as holy communion to date by Christian religion is not different from what our ancient people or ancestors performed and passed on to the future generations which we will perform now in this hallowed meeting. I want to repeat this that what Yahweheshua and his followers performed and continues to perform as holy communion to date by Christian religion is not different from what our ancient people or ancestors performed and passed on to the future generations which we will perform now in this hallowed meeting. Bread and wine, Kola Naut and wine, all are items used as basis for the remembrance or sustainability of important covenant culture and legacy of truth and righteousness. Every item on the table and their application in this meeting follows the order and pattern of Yahweheshua and the ancient people of Biafra, specifically Oha'uku State. So it is a holy communion. On behalf of Oha'uku State citizens here in Ijambwo, the state capital, I hereby present the Kola Naut, the palm wine, and all other items on the table to the host of Biafra Confederation from across the 40 states in homeland and exile. So I present them in the hand of Chief Etim of Itayanang State for all the states and national representatives. At this point, I want to invite Chief Etim of Itayanang to come and perform the acceptance of the items.
Oh, hell, Biafra. Oh, hell, Biafra. Oh, hell, Biafra. I remain Apawa Etim of Itayanang. I won't take much time. The Kola here does not hear English. So automatically ndi wasidana to us you weren't down. No, geez. Or do is anaka. So because one name, you will continue. Yes.
There will. Okay. So, Honorable Soni, I need to invite Onyema Wambu to come and perform the breaking and blessing of the Kola Naut and other items. He is in the meeting.
Onyema, right?
Yes, Onyema Wambu. I have spotted him in the meeting.
Onyema, unmute yourself, Onyema. Onyema doesn't have microphone. He has not connected his microphone. Onyema, connect your microphone so that you can be able to speak.
Onyema.
Yeah. I think he's having network issues. Onyema is having network issues.
Okay. To avoid wasting time, I want to call, um, Aparawa Etim. Aparawa, please come and perform the blessing and breaking of the kula.
All right, um. Uh, they can see where come bo. Now, oh gee, noneno tebleba. I'm a lot of gee, one ever now. Also, oh gee, the ever. Now, angara, ni handozo, o zuloke neba. Man, uh, deka, eto, omena na, Biafra si wera di, omena ni bo. Uh, kawaji, iboka.
Hmm, agawa yawa.
Agawa zee yawa. Uh huh, uh. I'm because of funny, yeah, me, 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 yeah. Uh, kay malo, oneek oje, balo.
Wow.
All right. Uh, eh, eh, buhoge, ayawago oje. And, uh, oje, awala, oza, you know. And they had, yeah, na, ani bonine, na Biafra, ni ne, that was, yeah, that was, yeah. Have you, na, ni bonine. But, uh, uh, even, uh, my Ithayanang and other places, I work, I am well, uh, four market days, four market days. Again, I need, okay, only a four, um, what? That is the great four market days, I am well. So, it is a great, uh, it's a great day. Uh, I have, was ago, any oje. I wanna say, no, god, there are in money, okay?
You say, say.
Apolitiar. Because it is an omission. You do have to. Uh, myself first. So. Um, I am. Uh, with. Some of fifteen thousand. A man. Okay. Because we will offer him, you are welcome. Um. Yes. I think. Um. Guys will offer him. Um, mute yourself. And speak. Let us. I'm muted myself. Okay, go ahead, go ahead and pick the cola. We are picking the cola now and. It is your turn. Go ahead. Okay, uh. Goodbye, goodbye, eh, um, uh, uh, my name is. Can I go now? Please, it is guys will offer him please. Every other person should wait. Stay muted until you are asked to mute, to unmute yourself, please. Guys will offer him, go ahead.
Well, thank you very much from here. Uh, I remain God's will offer him. Uh, special regards to. Our team Prime Minister. A special regards to. Our Prime Minister. And still our special regards to our Supreme Leader. Right from Ecom, we want to show solidarity with our sister states. Yeah, we share boundaries together and we are here to show that we are co-sisters. And the good people of Ecom. Have seen the dressing of the. The traditional table here, very, very wonderful traditional table. And, uh, we are. Eyeing the Angara. They got an egg. Yeah. It is synonymous to the way you call it, we still call it Angara. In my place and it's looking very, very beautiful like. The traditional egg. And we are going to support that with. Three thousand Naira AJ from Ecom States, take you from here.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. It is still. Time for the picking of the cola. I want to see hands up. Okay. Marzi. This, your name is not there.
It is pronounced as Amobi.
Okay, my Amobi, go ahead, you're welcome.
Yes, indeed, it is Amobi Chuku. Um, only Amobi Chuku you can say too. Uh, greetings everyone, my AP and this is from here. Um, I really want to appreciate Ohio for taking the lead. On this very aspect or joining those who have, you know, calling in town hall meeting on a weekday. It is very, very commendable and we expect every other person to follow suit. Like our Information Minister has always said, if we wait for Sundays. Some people will wait till next three years to be able to partake in the town hall meeting. So on behalf of Alanso State, I'm taking the cola, Anna May Wiroji with twenty thousand AJ. Thank you very much and God bless our Ohio citizens and God bless Biafrans, we are all Ohio citizens today. Salute everyone.
Thank you, thank you. We need to see hands up. The cola nut is enough. For everyone. In the meeting tonight, in fact, you can even take. Extra home. We need to see hands up. You can take, you can not, you can take Angara. And, uh, let's.
What is going on there, what is going on there, Dave? What is going on there? What is God's watch? What's up with them, see here?
Now she closed the door, why she can't see? He said make bless, he opened door, he walk for me, I saw he make bless. He not see open door. He said make bless, move hand, now he walk open door.
Okay, my wonderful people of Biafra. Lovers of freedom. And fight us for the freedom. Picking of the cola nut is still ongoing. And it is not only cola nut. We have Angara also, we have, um. Osoji and the book hall, we have palm wine. If you look at our table. We have enough palm wine there in the keg. Traditionally presented. So. You can as well take a cup of palm wine. And drink after you have chewed. You can take palm wine as well. I need to see hands up. This is why we are here. Let us. Prove that we are here indeed. I can see hands up. Yeah, Angala, you are welcome. Um, mute please, unmute yourself. Um, mute yourself. Angala. You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, 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 good evening, great Biafrans. Wow, this is beautiful. Good evening, our APM. Good evening, our Abo leader Maduna Dekano. Good evening to our. Abo Prime Minister. Good evening to our Abo, our son, eh? The Information Minister. Good evening to all Biafrans. I'm so happy today. This is a live performance. I am so, so happy today, so. On behalf of. Of the Megu State. I'm picking. Angara, that is guardian egg. With a one cup of palm wine. Hmm, because. I'm picking it with five thousand AJ. There were.
There were. And, um. There were. And I'm seeing Uncle the number, watching okay. The dog won't okay. The tradition. Personified. Friend. In the Biafra depression. Go ahead and unmute yourself. And enjoy the table.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Uh, thank you, I'm, I'm really, really happy tonight and the way this is. I see something that. I need to applaud. Actually, um, on political observance, uh, what APM, thank you, welcome to. And your entourage, you are welcome, thank you so much for the. Uh, visiting. So I'm glad to join Ohio today, I am from Ohio and, eh, to welcome you, sir. And I want to, uh, there's one thing another tradition I'm telling you, that is why. Um, our tradition is rooted in nature. It's natural, you can see that everything we use is natural items. None is man-made or artificial. That is why, um, anything natural is natural, is true, and truth is. I love natural. Rattens, okay, and then really, really, I am happy, thank you, uh, Ohio State. For doing this. Um, you know, there's one thing I realize that, eh, I. I hope for a roof. Look at the number, get them, but they're in there, so that is it, so. Exactly, so, um, I saw something that, eh, really, um. Good, so I want to welcome, um, take the, on behalf of, um, of the Megu State. Yes, I want to, um, appreciate. This gathering and also take a cola nut with twenty thousand AJ. There were. And then.
And, um. And from Uncle the number, we go to. Ian and John, unmute yourself. And enjoy the table. The table.
Call help, Biafra.
I'll help you.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear, loud and clear.
Yeah. Uh, good evening to our APM. And I also want to extend my prayer to our Prime Minister, we miss him so much. Followed by our. Supreme Leader. Masenam Dekali. We miss them. Our prayer cannot stop until we see them face to face. So, on behalf of, in short, it's not on behalf of, it should be, I'm from I don't even. I want to pick Bitakula because I like Bitakula for two thousand AJ. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian John, from I don't even. And from. John. We go to. Chika. Chika nine seven. Seven nine zero nine, unmute yourself. Chika.
Good evening, House.
Evening.
Good evening, APM, depending on your location, good evening, good afternoon. I thank everybody, yeah. Uh, from Alanso State. I'm picking the cola from with the. Five thousand AJ. That is original Chika speaking. Thank you very much and God bless you. APM. Kudos, 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 APM. We need more water, water to the enemies then. Give them bomba to bomba. God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please, you can put down your. You have, uh, spoken. If you have spoken, please, so that. We can know the hands that. Will know. I need to also remind us, I will need to keep reminding us that the table is loaded. With. Everything enjoyable. And, uh, you can, the cola nut. Remember that there is a keg of palm wine. A keg of palm wine, natural one. Munku. Manyanku. So you can as well take. A glass of each and. And enjoy the cola nut. From here we go to. Mebe ifoma. Mebe ifoma, go ahead. Umute yourself. And speak.
Speak everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, greeting from Alanso State. Uh, APM, thank you so much, it's been watching okay. Uh, greeting to all the, uh, Bricky Cabinet that are here present. Uh, greeting to our Ohio Administrator. I thank all of you. Yeah. From Alanso State and on behalf of Alanso State. I'm picking a cola with the sum of five thousand AJ. Um, COS. Thank you so much, Marzi Amobi. Thank you so much for all your support to the state. I'm Marzi Chika. I had you, thank you so much. Me, hello.
Thank you, my brother.
Bless all of you. Thank you. So much.
Thank you.
We proceed to. And Pat Joko. And Pat and Joko. And, uh. Speak. The table is loaded. With all you. All you do is.
Yeah, greeting, greetings, my honorable. Greetings to you, my acting Prime Minister. And all the Bricky Cabinet here present. Especially greeting to Ohio State Administrator. Um, this is, um, Park World State, I mean. I'm here to appreciate everyone. Who turned out en masse to support the town hall meetings of a Park World State and equally here. To encourage and support the people of Ohio State in their town hall meeting. And on behalf of a Park World State and the whole eastern region which Ohio State four hundred. I would like to support this town hall meeting and pick the cola with the sum of five thousand AJ. Let's continue to keep the fire burning. Remember, our final destination remains the restoration of Biafra. And nothing is going to stop us from achieving that, God bless you all. Thank you so much. Over to you, Ucua.
Thank you. Pat Joko, we must keep the fire burning. We must keep. Moving on. Moving on. Go back to go. If you have, uh, spoken, uh. Your mark, avoid distractions. Ian and John, you are, you are still raising your hand, do you want to go again? I'm. Do you want to go again? Ian and John. Up, do you want to go again? The palm wine. Umute yourself. So. Take your turn, unmute yourself. Okay, so, not close to his microphone. Or her microphone. We need hands up. There is still time, enough time to take the cola nut. And also take the palm wine. You need to be looking careful. Okay, though. Uh, umbedama. We are hearing loud and clear. Okay, that, I from beside them, I'm gonna go. Uh, Anna May can, uh, uh, our, our APM. And I'm Masia umbedama. Mas is only a warawa. Our Information Minister, I'm making a good umbedama. They can end the. Uh, oh, who in the ball are you, who? I'm making none. I'm, uh, AG one thousand AJ. When I support, uh, one down lega. Now for the Megu State. Uh. Then now for, now for my, 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 one thousand AJ. When I skip on him, I'm gonna, you. I don't know. We need to see your hand up. The cola nut and the. Or the. Please, if you are speaking. To avoid this. Okay, kindly mute yourself. I know. To avoid distracting the meeting. They might just come, I can't remember. My reward, I'm Nigeria. I'm pleased, I. He may have them. Also, also, also. My bye for my. If you are, I thank you. Okay. The floor is open for the picking of cola nut. And drinking of the palm wine. John. Of the table, you can see that everything is complete. Hello. I am here to cook my cola nut. Who is it? Oh, no, ma. I've already my hand up, nobody is calling me. We can't see your hand now. We can't see. My hand is still up. Can you hear me? Oh, yeah, ma, oh, yeah, ma. I can hear you, loud and clear. Okay, oh, yeah, my one bo, go ahead, go ahead and speak. Oh, yeah, my one bo. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. God bless you, um. And, uh, in the, uh, in behalf of. We have for hooku, I'm go. I'm going to go. And they pick my whole color, I'm picking my nut. Uh, I recognize the presence of our. APM, our presence of PM, which is one good. Um, I recognize the presence of our always saying, Nam Dekano. Madina Dekano, I am saying, God, with them, whatever, whatever they are in justice. Now, I'm picking my color. Thank you. And God bless you.
Thank you.
God bless you too. Oh, yeah, my one bo, you were not close to your mic when we called on you. So, that role you were supposed to play. Has been played now by. Another comrade. So you are welcome. We move. I was trying to, I was trying to pick my mic, but I told the. Mike, uh, they're not ready to pick mic. It is all right, it is. That high, I'm not the mic. It is all right. Uh, no problem. All the actors, all the actors are here, I could say, I can take it in gold, you know. There's a problem. The color is still another day. It's about picture of home, the night. Are you done? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Oh, yeah, my one boys, okay, we, we've, we've heard you, thank you. Alright. We need. We need hands up. If you are a participant in this meeting. Your participation is not complete without picking the cola. The cola is the reason you are here. Number one reason you are here. Take part of the table of the meeting. By picking either the cola. Or the Angara. Or you can as well. Take a glass of palm wine, as you can see. We have enough palm wine to go round. To the whole forty state. Of Biafra Confederation. We have enough palm wine tonight. Alright, Jenny Oyama. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. I welcome the APM to Ohio. And his entourage. On behalf of Ecom. State. I'm supporting you guys with forty AJ.
There were.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ohio State. Is simply. The great. People state. As you are. All welcome in this meeting. You are as well welcome to come and share in the greatness of Ohio. So. The floor is still open for the picking of the cola. So that we can move to the next agenda. The floor is open. I need, see hands up. Everyone in the meeting tonight. Needs to take cola nut home. Needs to drink. Everyone in the meeting tonight. Needs to go home with a piece of cola nut. You can as well take for those. Jenny Oyama, you have finished. Please mute yourself. To avoid. Distracting the meeting. The floor is open for the picking. Of cola nut. Let there be no dull moment, please. This is why we are here. Let there be no dull moment. Everyone should pick cola nut. So far, we are at eight. A number. And like I have said already. Your participation will not be complete without picking the cola nut. You can as well share in the keg of palm wine. Every item on the table is enough to go round. Oh, yes, eh, here you are. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Oh, yes, eh, unmute yourself.
Eke lemge, watching okay. Udo dronya bola.
He say.
My, my, my Abo APM. I thank you so much, good evening from Ohio State. I greet all the honorable members. I greet all the continental rep. I greet everybody. I thank especially our. Our men on ground. The Biafra Defense Force that are doing wonderfully well. In homeland, especially in Okwe currently as it is today. I thank. Our APM. And the, and the, and the. Our PM, Madesamoneba. Oh, yes, sure, and yeah, I'm a boy. My special greeting also to. Oh, yeah, and do I. I am an Ogeji Freedom Appo. And we wish him well, I thank everybody here. My Abo APM. Actually, I mean, I give my own work, I'm. Morning, daily, narorai, only in our own day, Biafra. Oh, my, you know, no law, all the women at home. The elderly women, the children, everybody is happy with you. With the good news we are hearing everywhere. Thank you so much, the. Acting Prime Minister of the people of Biafra, thank you so much. Actually, I mean, one thousand AJ. You give my own work, I'm. Caperege, eto la ta ta caperege. I'm a new boy, I'm a new boy, it's broken, uh. Now Washington DC. Uh, in a broken, uh, Washington DC, I need one in it. I see you didn't kill you, oh, yes, you didn't go, didn't go, you didn't, ma. Udo dragon, eh, K, dragon, no, dragon, uh, for dragon, uh, uh. Okay, eh, you make a man, yeah. And then you make a national, uh. Sebiko. On that, I call them, ba. We want to welcome you people home. All of you that are in exile because. A time has come when you will all come home. We want to welcome you home. And, eh, until the. The mountain. That we need to cross until we level them, all the saboters, bring them to book. So that this book. Everybody, everybody, the world will read the book, the world will recognize the book wherever they see it. I will appreciate your effort in bringing all of them to book. And we support you, where is they support you? On, on the maxim of only God can forgive. Man cannot forgive, it's only God that can forgive. All of them that has. Made us to stay this far before getting to the promised land. All of them should be bring or brought to book. So that that book, generation upon generation, will read it. And they will be able to understand and know how many mountains. And bridges that we cross. Before getting to the promised land, udo drun, and there were.
There were.
There were.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that wonderful speech of yours. And from you, Oyese, we move again. Number. Number, Negrem Banri. Unmute yourself. Wachineke.
Thank you so much. And they won. The other in there. Yes. Um. Ifa, ifa, is our own, and any we are, any part of Biafra is my home. Yes. I want to, um, uh, because this. I confirm, 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 confirm. My cam, I have to. Our. Our. At least. Artist. So call, I had to. The need to support your work. To, to, you be able to protect us well. Because man, um, in the sense, in the sense, help us to serve you well. We need to help you to protect us well by providing every needed logistics needed, those in homeland and those, uh, those. So please know that this is your duty, it's a task on our shoulder. Nobody is exempted. So I want to. Second. Fifty thousand AJ, thank you so much.
Hmm.
Thank you. So total is forty. Forty thousand AJ, thank you.
There were.
Thank you, number, Negrem Banri. Uh, you have said it all. Number, no, no, no. In the state of Ahaoku, it is called Obele or Okuru. So, we need hands up. You can as well take palm wine to your friends, to any of your relatives. It is good, women drinks palm wine, men drinks, even children drinks. You can take home anything from the table. We have all of them. We are still picking the kola nut. We are still angara and picking the palm wine. Put it hands up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can locate you.
I want.
Here you go again. Please always say.
I am there.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on. Always stay mute there. You raise your hand up. But it is like you don't know how to raise your hands. Alright, you can go ahead. Oyama Wambu. You can go ahead.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I raised my hand up that they are removing you, I don't know why. So, I have to take my. I have to remember. I have to remember. I have been a triple. My triple. I understand. We're better.
Wait, the. Oyama. Oyama, we can not hear you, if you are using earphone, remove that earphone. If you are using earphone in your phone, remove the earphone and talk out the earphone, because we can't hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Oyama?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I want, want to. So, I hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Hey. I want to. I want to take, I want to, uh, take. Unkwa cha from Obelime to my triple general. You go but two so. Because what he's doing is annoying. Because he's able to hold. They are very well. They are quite what we. I'm very, the, 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 the sound of victory there. So I want to give uh, Obelime two thousand AJ. And I want to. Je t'osso. Je t'osso diya. What use? Two thousand AJ. Give me. Because is what we do. It's.
Oyama, your network is so bad.
Well, we hear what he said.
Oyama, are you still there? Or have we lost you?
I think network came out already.
Okay, you can.
By the promise.
Oyama, you can come back again if network allows you. But before then, let us continue to pick the kola. The kola has been served. Oyese, are you raising your hand again?
Yeah, I, I come again in peace with updates from, from Oweri State. It's here, Soni, our Ebo Information Minister, I greet you.
There were, there were, there were.
Hmm. Ma, eh, as a Bina Biafra is supporting on Oku, executive with two thousand AJ.
There were.
Thank you.
Okay, our number is increasing.
Yeah, making it, making it three thousand from Oweri State, we are still hoping to keep updating. Thank you.
Welcome, God bless you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, we move on. The number of participants is increasing. If you are just joining us, we are picking the kola nut for the meeting. Everyone in the meeting is eligible. The evidence of your participation is the kola nut. As you can see it right there on the table, in, or should I say, on the right hand and on the left, you can see a keg of palm wine, Obelime. All for everyone here in this meeting. As you are taking kola nut, you are also taking the palm wine and drink. If you are just joining us, you can take your turn by raising your hand, excuse me. Raise your hand so that we can see you and give you the microphone to take kola. Let there be no dull moment, we still have other things to do in today's meeting. And there, we need to make this picking of kola good enough. Alright, Masasi Pran. If I'm not mistaken. Unmute yourself, wachineke.
Yeah.
Ma. Okay.
Can I move? I'm being heard. Am I being heard?
You are coming out loud and clear. Go ahead.
It is greetings to everyone. May the Lord, Jikoki, Adiam. Greeting each and everyone on the board. Greeting, special greetings to our APM and our Information Minister in the person of, uh, Soni. And Soni Parawa. Our protocol of them, all the honorables and ministers are greeted tonight, especially greeted to one of the Angreka. My, my state admin, the difficult admin, I greet you. Number, I greet you. Thank you all. On Oku, I greet you for who calling all together once again. Be with you. Without waste too much time, I use a two thousand AJ to take my own cup of wine. And watcha. I greet everybody. Thank you all, the same you care. I'll be remaining through Oglagus State. There were.
There were. And from here, we move to Moses, Osisoma. Unmute yourself and take the stage. Moses, Osisoma. Unmute yourself and take the stage. There were.
I greet everyone in this, uh, meeting. Our Ebo APM, Information Minister, and all the minutes top in the house. I greet you all. Uh, this evening, I'd like to pick kola with, uh, ten thousand AJ on behalf of Oglagus State. There were.
There were.
There were.
Oglagus State. And the year is allowed, overtake is allowed. Overtake is allowed. We need members of this platform, members of this, uh, great occasion from across the state of Biafra to take kola. And as well, take the palm wine. If you are here in this meeting, you are entitled to take kola nut. And it appears it is only one female voice that we have heard so far. Where are, where are other women? My own mom loves palm wine. Perhaps the women's, the women here also will love palm wine. So, you have the opportunity now. We have enough palm wine. And we also have reserve in case, uh, the one you're looking at now finishes. We have more kegs waiting to be taken. Alright, Oppo. Oppo, CPH twenty ninety-five. Unmute yourself and enjoy the table of the event. Oppo. Unmute yourself. Oppo, are you there? Oppo, CPH twenty ninety-five. Unmute yourself and take the stage. Oppo is not close to his or her microphone. Alright. We are still waiting for the kola nut to be taken. The kola nut must not remain. The kola nut and the angara and the palm wine, everything must be consumed tonight. Or today, depending on your time zone. Okay. Since Oppo is not responding, we go to Holand F. Holand F, over to you. Holand F, unmute yourself and speak. Holand F, you just raised your hand now. Why are you not unmuting yourself to speak? You just raised your hand now. Unmute yourself then and speak.
Hello, can, can I, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, I'm up.
You are coming out.
Oh, thank you very much. Uh, I want to greet the house and I want to appreciate every Biafra across the globe and particularly to the homeland. Uh, please, and I'm happy to see Ahaoku that has come up. And the whatever touch you want has touched all of us. We are in this together because we're beer, we're camaraderie together. We are one brotherhood together. And Holand is from Isoko. And the, I would like to take a Aligato paper, if you have Aligato paper there, I would like to take Aligato paper with five thousand AJ. Thank you.
We have Aligato paper.
Thank you, Omo.
We have varieties. Here, we have Aligato paper, we have, um, garden egg, we have grand nut. We have, uh, kola nut and the we have palm wine.
Please, uh, 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 I will send my receipt to, uh, um, Nki. Nki pick my receipt up, we will not afford it.
There were. Alright, Oppo, are you ready now? Oppo, CPH twenty ninety-five. Oppo, if you are ready, unmute yourself and take kola nut. Oppo is not ready. And so we go to Yunis, Uchachi. Yunis, unmute yourself and take the stage.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
There were no. Uh, yeah, uh, sorry. Uh, because when we were, um, man, our own time is different from your time, so. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm hope, I'm hope, I'm hope. Just say, just jumped up and I found out that the town hall is going on because I worked last night and I'll be going back to work again. Because of bottom. So I was hearing that it's only one female's voice that you find, I say, ah. What do they have? Ah, 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 how come one female's voice can, no, hey, female will never carry last. So, I'm not hope, ekene muno, God bless you. And I want to greet every, uh, honorable in the house, want to greet our APM, uh, our COA, Smazisno, uh, Parawa, Mestere. Thank you all, everyone, yeah, um, on behalf of, uh, myself and my Aludo. I want to take kola, no, I want to take a garden egg with, uh, twenty thousand AJ and also, uh, what's that? Our APM with ten thousand AJ. So thirty thousand AJ for Yunis, there were.
There were. It was. Now. So I don't know why women, uh, allow women to drink. How this. This time around. Overtake is allowed. Yeah, you cannot take, you can't take that egg. And you can drink palm wine. Hmm. That is what it is. And from Yunis, we move come on to. Come on to. Techno, come on twelve, amute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
I believe I'm the, the one that you're calling Oppo, but that one cannot work, that I'm using this one now. To.
Okay, you can go and put your hands down. After.
Yes, uh Huku Admin is talking. Uh. Please, uh I want to take my cola, I'm greeting uh. Mazzi, I'm the Kano, I'm greeting uh Mazzi Simon Epa. I'm greeting uh A P M. And uh. All the cabinets in the house. Uh. Please, uh I want to pick my own uh cola. On behalf of uh Huku State Director in Biafra land. And all my executive, we are here. Assembled. Uh and we are all hearing what all you people are doing and we are trying. Uh best those who are working as seriously to see that Biafra. Uh comes true. Uh we thank all of you, Chukwuka, continue to bless all of you. And uh agrees. Agrees on your elbows. Please, we are taking our own cola and one glass of uh palm wine. With uh. Two thousand Ajma. And uh. Now we are. Thank you very much and when you call me again, I will speak.
Alright, um Techno, come on twelve. You, you said. You said. Please, we're making. Okay, so Techno. Come on twelve, it didn't go away yet. Okay, you said you are Huku Admin.
I'm the one that speak.
Okay, I wanted to give him a.
Under person, then they should amute themselves.
Alright. Alright. So move from Techno, come on twelve. To Holland F again. Or is it the first hand, are you raising your hand again, Holland F? Holland F, if you're okay, you have put down your hand. Techno, come on twelve, you can as well put your hands down if you are, if you are done speaking. There were. We continue. Until we get to the end. We must keep on keeping on until we get to the end. We are still. At. The picking of Kula not. And the floor is wide open. The floor is wide open. The items on the table, there are still much. It is not going down enough. It has not gone down enough. The Kula not are still much. The garden egg is too much. The keg of palm wine. Is still at the neck. So we need uh. We need people who are drunk hard, yes. Because we have enough. For consumption. We have enough on the table. We have enough on the table. You take the Kula not, you take the garden egg or you take the palm wine. We need more hands up. We need more hands up as we approach. The next item on the table. We need more hands up. So far. We still have forty. Participants in the meeting. And uh. Everyone needs to take Kula not. As evidence. That you went or attended this meeting. You can as well take for those. Who are at home. You can take in and take away. Yes, that is the way it is. Here in the meeting, you can take. And you can as well take away. And Mary has shown up. Mary, amute yourself and take the stage.
Okay, thank you very much, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Thank you, good evening everyone. Good evening, our A P M. Good evening, everyone here. Uh in uh. Oh, Omebu.
Ahaku.
Our, our Haku State, yeah?
No, 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 hold on, Ahaku State.
Ahaku State.
Yeah, Ahaku, it means great people.
Yeah. Of course, thank you very much, Ahaku State. Uh I want to greet our A P M. Welcome him with his good job and what he's doing. Please to continue doing it, may God almighty be with you. He say, he say, he say. So I welcome our A P M with five thousand Aj. And I pick the beautiful, very sweet uh. A garden egg, I see there. And the Kula not. Because I, ah, long time I eat garden egg, eh? I think I can taste it. Eh with the uh our peanut. Yes, with five thousand Aj, that is ten thousand Aj, I will pay through Idongi Bong State. For behalf Idongi Bong, because I'm Idongi Bong, yeah? Thank you very, very much. I will see them, thank you sir. Thank you.
Okay, we move Honorable Sani. Let's remind you when it is time to go to. The next item in agenda. Honorable Sani.
Yes, I can hear you sir.
Okay, when it is time to switch to the next agenda. You give me the go ahead. Or do I do that now?
Uh if you don't have more hands agenda, you can go to the next uh. Hold on, let me see, what's the next on your. Agenda. Okay, you can go ahead with item number eight.
Alright. Alright. Okay. Here we go to the item number eight. And at this point, I want to urge everyone. To lend. Me his ears and his mind. Her ears and her mind. The next. Item is. The speech. The speech of. Or the address of. Ahaku State. Today is a great day in Ahaku State. Ahaku State. Both literally and figuratively means great people state. As we have been saying. Ahaku is one of the three states created from old Ebony state. Of the zoo called Nigeria. And located in eastern region of the Biafra Confederation. Apart from a great day. Today is also a unique and remarkable day. When Biafras all over the world have opportunity to demonstrate. Or practicalize their efforts and results. For freedom, especially financially. Therefore, with every passion, pleasure and love. I, on behalf of Ahaku State citizens, welcome you all ladies and gentlemen. Fellow Biafrans and friends of Biafrans, very specially to this great event. This is. An event of honor and dignity for not only the people of Ahaku State. But equally for all Biafrans and visitors. Honestly, I am yet to find the words good enough. To welcome and appreciate everyone. I especially welcome, however. And appreciate. The presence of Biafra Republic Government in exile acting Prime Minister Honorable Oguchuku Nkere. And all the government officials with him. I welcome and appreciate the presence of Biafra de facto government. In the homeland ministers, administrators and leaders at all levels. In this Ahaku State Town Hall Meeting. I cannot forget to welcome and appreciate the mighty presence or representative of. The Biafra Defense Forces in all formations and commands. All regards and celebrations goes to our Prime Minister Simon Epa. And Supreme Leader Mazzi Nnamdi Kano. Our eternal leaders. Generals Odmebu Ojuku, Philip Ifiong and others of blessed memory. The efforts of Biafra heroes and heroines past and present shall never be. In vain in the name of Elohim Chukwuka Biamma. I need to inform. Or remind Biafrans that we have come a long way in this journey and efforts to freedom. And only but a short way right now is left to go. As each day comes and goes, our freedom is near. By the tireless efforts we are making in the grace of Elohim. So we must keep on keeping. In all areas of our endeavors till they finish. So. All eyes must be on purpose. All eyes must be on the ball, or better still, all eyes must be on the rising sun according to. Our P M, Simon Epa. Biafra had existed first as a kingdom in ancient times. Biafra existed later again as a republic between nineteen sixty seven to seventy. And now in our time, Biafra will be existing as a confederation in which Ahaku State is a component state. However, Biafra depends on us to become a reality than we depend on Biafra. That is why our commitment to Biafra cause must be genuine, patriotic and finalized. And events such as this town hall meeting. Offers us opportunity to remember and maintain our commitment duties or requirements. So Ajma and Aj should not only reign massively. As always. But should flood this meeting today towards the plan of Biafra liberation in homeland and recognition in Aspura. Restoration of Biafra simply means the final result or outcome. Of liberation and recognition of Biafra, which is the crux and essence. Of our existence as a government in struggle. Otherwise, we are not fair to the struggle. And our best fairness to the struggle after the declaration. Of independence is constant sacrificial donation of Ajma and Aj. Which many of us are doing, I must confess. But still, many of us Biafrans are not doing it enough at all. I urge all Biafrans in homeland. In Lagos, in Abuja, in Kano, in everywhere they reside, in the zoo and all over the world. To start donating to Biafra government in support of their freedom. Their own freedom. Because Biafra is for all Biafrans, not only for the liberators. Another point I want to make has to do with truth and honesty. Discipline and consistency, which our leader Mazzi Nnamdi Kano used to emphasize a lot. When he was with us. Truth in this context of Biafra struggle is the ability to follow what. One already knows as true. While honesty is the ability to follow what one did not know already, but have just come to know as true. Discipline is one's training for performance, while consistency is one's readiness. Or steadiness of performance. Following the avoidable conflict, division and disharmony created by Accountability Group One. And Two of Ungazi Oraubeze and Imam Adabum. Since after Biafra Independence Redeclaration Convention in Lahti, Finland twenty twenty four. Some genuine Biafrans have lost the truth and followed wrong direction. While some are confused, staying in the fence. The truth they need to know and follow today is nothing else than Biafra Republic Government in exile. And Biafra de facto government in homeland led in the absence of P M. Simon Epa. By A P M Oguchuku Nkere. Under which this town hall meeting of Ahaku State today is legally happening. The impact of Ungazi Oraubeze's evil activities has been very devastating, if not worst, in Ahaku State. Everything seems to have collapsed as most of the then executive. Gullibly or ignorantly followed the queen of subtlety and deception. Or maybe a huge. A situation of ten tent or Israel existed in Ahaku State. Many became silent. And inactive, sitting on the fence and yet expecting freedom to happen with little or zero effort. Many are really sitting on the fence because in Ahaku State platform, which used to bubble. With post when P M Simon Epa. As I'm speaking, has over two hundred members. It is only Orafu Lani that makes post with. One or two of her bingos also making post once in a blue moon, meaning the platform is dead. Today, in this historic town hall meeting, we have come with life, healing and truth. Direction. By bow and new beginning. Ahaku State and beyond for resolute services of freedom. All Biafrans and humanity need to be aware. That we are not begging for freedom. We are not merely wishing for freedom. In fact, we are no longer agitating for freedom, but we. Are now fighting for freedom practically and unstoppable. If anyone thinks we will ever go back for any reason, I want to disappoint such a person. That there is no back to go. The only way to go is front, which we are going as succeeding with amazing speed. And achievements. We are winning. As A P M would say. We are winning, as APM would say, Biafra is here. I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Over to you Mazze Sani.
Thank you watching again. Thank you so much for that welcoming address. You have captured everything, virtually everything. We have IG, IG your hand is up? Go ahead.
My comment?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm going to represent Abony with 3000 Ajé.
Thank you.
Please, help me flash this Lagos liaison telegram. Let me know if it is a right channel.
COA, can you hear?
Come again, please.
I say Lagos liaison telegram number. Flash it. Let me know if it is the one I have. I had donated last week a donation there.
Do you have the Lagos liaison contact?
Yeah, 71 and 71.
Where did you get it from?
Yeah, if you say 71, that number is the same number. That is plus 239 9859 871.
871?
Yeah.
Let me check it. I will come back.
Okay, you can contact the number again. Send your message and wait for reply.
Okay, or you send your WhatsApp, WhatsApp number.
Either on WhatsApp or Telegram. The number is in both platforms. So just drop the message there and you will be responded to.
Okay.
Thank you.
COA, go to the next item on the program.
Okay. On the next item of the program, introduction, brief introduction and overview of Ohauku State structure. Do we have Mazze Joseph here? Mazze Joseph, are you in the meeting? If you are in the meeting, unmute yourself and speak. It's same, Mazze Joseph is not in the meeting. So, let me take us briefly on this one. Ohauku State is a very... Who is that, please? Please let there be no destruction. If you are not speaking, you wait till your turn to speak. So as I was saying, Ohauku State is a very beautiful place. Ohauku State is a great people state. As you can see in the screen, that is the map of Ohauku State. The Biafra map of Ohauku State. Fifteen counties. And each county has a district five and each district has three rewards. We must admit that the activities of Ungazi Orobese has been a tsunami, has been a disaster in the struggle across the 40 states. But specifically now in Ohauku. Almost all the executives who were vibrant as at the time PM was here, even till the convention, all of a sudden, they all disappeared from the scene. It's either they went and followed her to run her propaganda and blackmail, which is backfiring on them, or they became confused, became silenced, if not went into oblivion. We pray through this Town Hall meeting that all of them put together and more, we receive revival, revival and come back to finish the business of freedom that all of us started because we must get to the end. The scripture, the holy book says that better is the end of a thing than it is not enough to start a thing. You have to walk all the way, go through all the hurdle and challenges to accomplish that very thing you started. That is when your joy will be full. And so in Ohauku State, it has been a disaster, but right through this very Town Hall meeting, we are looking forward to revival. We are looking forward to all the great men and women, both those that we know and those that we don't know, to surface and join us in this very noble task that Elohim has called us to undertake. It is our collective responsibility. So, with the next few minutes, I have, we have the first in the number of counties. The reason we will mention these names is so that everyone in the state will know or hear about their own county and make every effort to join them. When you get to the county, you will find your own district. And when you get your district, you find your own ward. It is very, very important. Both home and abroad, anywhere you are as a citizen of Ohauku State, it is your duty to locate your county. Number one, Mbaloko. Mbaloko is a county of Ohauku State. Number two is Odeké. Odeké is a county. And we have in number three, Ezulaw. Ezulaw is a county. Number four, we have Ezago. Ezago is a county. Number five, we have Uriaba. Uriaba is a county. And number six, we have Ijia, which is the state capital from where this meeting is coming to all of us tonight or today, depending on your time zone. Ijia is a county and the capital of Ohauku State. We have number seven, Amese. We have number eight, Alisako. We have number nine county, Ishimbo. We have number 10 county, Amuku. We have number 11 county, Mwibekefion. We have number 12, Wefaefion. Number 13, Igweledoha. Number 14, Ebia. And the last of it, number 15, we have Ngangukoro. So, these are the names of counties in Ohauku State. Ohauku State is a great people state as we have been saying since this meeting began. Ohauku State is located in the old Abony state that the zoo called Nigeria created. Ohauku State has a lot of mineral resources apart from the arable lands, apart from the rainforest, deep, deep rainforest, some of which, if you enter the forest, it is only in few places that you can see the sky. That is to show you how thick the forests are. The forests, not one, not two, in many places have thick, thick forest. Ohauku State, I remember that during Obasanjo's regime in the zoo, the Chinese people came after signing bilateral agreement and all that with the government of Obasanjo. At some point, the Chinese also came up again for another agreement. What is agreement? The agreement is that they said according to them that between Enugu and the Abony state alone, there are millions and thousands and millions of mineral resources and business opportunities. But they need a new agreement with the Nigeria government under Obasanjo then to get to work and develop those resources and those business opportunities. But you know, to prove how Nigeria hates anything good in the southeast or in Biafra land, Obasanjo never signed it because he knew, or rather, there know that the companies will be centered in Biafra land. Yes, they knows that Biafra people will be employed gainfully through the development. So he never signed that agreement with the Chinese. But the point I want to make to Biafrans tonight is that Ohauku State is part of that old Abony state where those mineral resources are embedded in the soil. Those mineral, natural resources, some of which I cannot mention now because of failure of our people to uncover them. They failed to produce the list. Even as I am making this speech, the person who is supposed to deliver that list never did it is part of the weaknesses and indiscipline that they have. That is by the way. And so in summary, Ohauku State is a great people, just as their name sound. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, COA. And at this point, we call on the, we invite the APM to take this stage. Honorable Ogachukwu Nkere, the talking I do, APM of the Biafran people. You are welcome to Ohauku State.
They won, they won. Thank you, Honorable Minister of Information and thanks for all you're doing. You and your team. Our Biafran people, we appreciate you and Leader Mazze Nnamdekan, Prime Minister as well. We'll be so proud of you. Thank you very much for holding your ground, doing the needful. They won. Ohauku, thank you all for this privilege to be with you. They won. Thank you. And for other states that have not organized Town Hall meeting, please kindly do that because we are in night hours. A lot of stuff is happening and we see what is happening. You know, Amadika state, they are confused till now. It's one of the stubborn states. When we say sit at home, they hardly even sit at home. But I don't see any reason why the some majority will not even know the right path to follow. So shameful and disgraceful. Please, for all other states that have not scheduled for their Town Hall meeting, please kindly do that. We are in the night hour. A lot is happening. We might be few, but we are not backing down. We are not. We are not going to retreat nor surrender. Enemies of Biafrans are fighting every day. They are having a sleepless night. That is the reason why we always appreciate our leader Ojuku and our leader Philip Ifiong for opening our eyes for us to know the reason why we should fight for our freedom. Because freedom is not given, but rather, freedom is taken. My fellow citizens from Ohauku, if you don't take your freedom, you will, you know, no one will give it to you. And charity begins at home. So we need to do what is right and practice being free. Whatever that you know that will prevent you from actualizing your dream or from being free, you need to kick back, fight against whatever it is, any force of any nation, whatever. And remember, when you are fighting, you are not just fighting for yourself. You are fighting for your entire family, your extended family, your generation, both born and unborn. As I'm speaking, one of our honorees just draw my attention to what is going on. The enemies, they are attacking us from all angle. They are fighting us from the homeland. They are fighting us here in abroad. They are attacking our finance. They are doing everything. This is how you know Biafra is here. If what we are doing is not paying off or if it is not working, they're not going to be fighting us the way they are now. They will just be quiet and say, leave these Mumu people, leave these people. They don't know what they are doing. But what we are doing is really effective. That's why we also appreciate our leader Mazze Nnamdekan. We know it's not easy. Where he been for over four years now? They kidnapped him against his wish. They kidnapped him against all international law. They kidnapped him from Kenya. The Nigerian terrorist country, evil country, a dream killer country, country that killed its own, a scam country, shithole, gutter country, country that was and sold them on the money. Kidnapped our leader Mazze Nnamdekan, not to hand him bread and butter in DSS. Rather, they torture him first from Kenya for good eight days. They even regret not killing him in Kenya, but they forget that God hands is in it that he's indestructible. We pray and we believe very soon he will join us. Our activity from Ohauku and Biafra at large, we help his freedom or his release. If we just keep quiet, the Nigerian terrorist country, that will be a win for them. We will not be quiet. We'll keep fighting, keep fighting, no matter the bullets they throw on us, no matter what. Just few days ago on Saturday, we have our fundraising for our recognition and for our recognition and diplomatic war, I call it, and also to fund those that are protecting our land. In the next day, we have a town hall meeting. Here we are again, middle of the week. That tells you that we are hungry are gonna going to be free. We are hungry for our freedom. A lot of us that live in the Western world, we have tested what freedom is all about. We have tested what good life is all about. And we have tested what security is all about. And this is not just about Biafran people being free. It's all about our life that matter. It's all about our existence. The Nigerian terrorists and the Fulani heads men and the jihadis, bloodsucking demos, they have colluded and planned how they will wipe us from our land, not just our land. How they will wipe us from the surface of the earth and annihilate us completely. Are we going to be quiet and let that happen? What we are fighting for is bigger than what you are thinking. We are fighting so that our sons and daughters, father, mother, uncle, nephews, we have life. We have a place in this world to call a home. The terrorist country called Nigeria, they are not our God. They are not our creator. Nor the Fulani jihadist terrorists, they are not our God, neither our creator. They don't have the right to decide for us what to do. They don't have the right to cage us under their arm. They don't have the right to decide whether we should be free or not. Our freedom is in our hand. We as a people of Biafra, we need to decide. Do we wanna remain as a slave? Or we want to remain as freeborn? Do we wanna have a land called Biafra? Do we wanna have a place called home? Or we wanna remain in exile? A lot of Biafrans that have traveled far and wide searching for a green old park shop, they can't even go back to their own Asastri land. All because of insecurity caused by this stupid dumb shit country called Nigeria, shithole that was just created about hundred and twenty years ago. A lot of Biafrans in Dasporan refuse to go back home because of the insecurity. Because they make Nigeria undervivable. They make Biafra unlivable. The Nigerian state makes sure in Biafra land you don't have electricity. You cannot enjoy electricity in a whole week, even a whole full day. You don't have good road. You don't have seaweed system. Every year smells stink. You don't have good education, no good hospital, no security. On top of that, they rape our women, they rape our children. They will rape the goats. Whatever in their wish, everything is rapeable to them. And according to their religion, they have the right to rape everything. And for those that are fighting us, that are fighting our finance system so won't be able to fund our freedom. Just few days ago, I did not regret laying costs on all these evil doers. All the sabotware. Both those in Biafra land in Dasporan, it will never be well with them. Everything, nature of life will work against all the evil sabotware that have come to kill us, that have come to destroy us, that have come to walk with the enemies of Biafra against us. Everything, nature of this world, of this beautiful earth that God created, will work against all the sabotware. Whether they are in the media, whether they are content creator, or whether they are blogging using Biafra to make money, to enrich themselves. If you wanna use the activity of what is happening in Biafra land to make money, you can. But don't lie against those that are pioneering this great cause. But don't sabotage this great movement. Don't fight against Biafra. Don't lie against Biafra. And for all the evil ones that have destroyed our name, character assassination, lie against us, all manners of propaganda against Brigi, against Biafran people, everything nature of this world will work against such individual that will not have peace. And what I'm saying today is not extended to, to extended family, immediate families. All of them will have no peace. Solo agony will be their portion. Pain for the rest of their life. But any extended family that partake of this evil that these people have come to gang up against us, that extended family, we also partake from this, I call it, great cause. We remember what the Holy Book, the Bible, told us about what happened in Egypt. God laid cause on those that are fighting against his people then. We remember the Noah flood. We remember Sudan, Ngomor. We remember according to the Bible, those that believe in the Bible, sorry if you don't. I am a bona fide Christian. That's my belief. Sorry if you don't believe in what I'm saying. I'm sorry about that. The Bible led us to know that true one man, Adam and Eve, sin gets to us or come to us, come to us. We all inherited their sin, sin that I was not there when it happened. Not Biju, Bida. Whatever Adam and Eve did, I'm not there, you're not there. But you inherit that sin. Of which we fight to be pure every day. We fight to do what is right in the eyes of God and humanity. And for those that are still practicing evil, doing evil stuff, their portions still remain destruction. That is the word of God. In the case of Biafra, all you evil people, all the evil people that are discouraging Biafrans to fund their freedom, to support their freedom, it will never be well. Our Prime Minister was called for so questioning not because of his business dealing, because of his fight for freedom, he is fighting for his people, Biafra. While we have some Biafrans, instead of fighting for Biafra, they are fighting against Biafra. Biafra is here. Whether the sabotware like it or not, we will fight to the end. Will not bow down to anyone. And I will repeat again. Our leader Mazinamdekan, when he's out, he might decide to forgive the sabotwares. I believe majority of Biafrans will not. I will not unless they repent from their evil way, unless they undo all the mess. Because some evil ones' action, words they utter out have killed a lot of innocent Biafrans that do nothing wrong. If our Prime Minister Mazinamdekan is out tomorrow and say, oh, you sabotwares are forgiving, I will not, under one condition. Unless the sabotwares repent from their evil way, embrace the truth, speak the truth, do what is right. That's all we asking for. We are not encouraging Biafrans to go and start committing crime. We are not encouraging Biafrans to go and start looting people's property, invading communities, raping other people, women or children or whatever. We are not doing that. All we encourage fellow Biafrans to do is to fight for their freedom so they can live and their neighbor can live as well. So we all can live in peace, so we all can coexist. But if you are a sabot, fighting against Biafra, what I'm saying right now is with pain from my heart on behalf of the people that I love so much, Biafran people. Yes, too much pain. Biafra land is bleeding. The terrorists have colluded with the Nigerian state. Their goal and objective is how to eliminate all of us. How to destroy Biafran people, kill Biafran people and annihilate us. How to wipe us out from the first of this earth. It will never happen. Tunubu, a drug dealer, criminal, happened to be the president of Nigeria. How do you think Mazio Getukun Kiri and the entire Biafran people, we accept a criminal like Tunubu to be our president? How do you think the same terrorists that we are kicking back against or fighting against, how do you think we Biafrans, we allow shitty man, co-founder of a terrorist organization called Bukuharan, to come and rule over Biafran people? Thank God, Biafra is already ready declaring in Finland, December the 2nd. We are not Nigerians. Nigeria have a spiral. When the British government and Magomed this dumb shithole country called Nigeria, their agreement is for one hundred years. My fellow citizens, can you ask the British Empire? Why didn't they undo whatever nonsense they have done? Nineteen fourteen is over hundred years. The hundred years is over. The marriage did not work. The northern part of Nigeria have their own different ideology, different education system governed by their Sharia law, different religion, they speak different language, they eat different food. Then when you come to Biafra land, we have different ideologies. We love Western education. We embrace the way of the West. Why did not embrace the way of terrorism? They embrace the way of Iran, Tehran. They embrace, they embrace the way of Islamist jihadism. They embrace the way of to conquer people, conquer territories, chase people from their land. But we, the Biafra, embrace the way live and let live. Stay in your home, have your peace. While we stay in our home, we have our peace. Worship your God while we worship our God. We never go to the north to invade them or to forcefully convert them to Judaism or to Christianity or to worship our God. We are not one people. This war, this fight they have brought to us, we will fight and defend our land, defend ourselves. We'll do everything humbly possible to liberate our land. It's a must. It's a promise. And if you are a Biafran with the pain in our heart, you're walking against us, knowing that what you are doing is evil, the land of Biafra calls you. We as Biafran, by the authority from the creator of the universe, knowing that we are doing what is right, we call you unless you repent from your evil way. We are few in number. There's this saying that goes, it takes a few to liberate a nation. So we are still few in number. And there's few in number. The evil ones are trying to destroy the few minds so they cannot support their freedom. That means they want everything to collapse. We will not forget. Go to Biafra land, all over Biafra land. There is death everywhere. By who? By the terrorist country called Nigeria that have colluded with the Islamist jihadist bloodsucking demos. Why I call them bloodsucking demos? These people have no remorse about whatever they do. They don't care. They will cut your head off, chop you off, cut your hand, rape entire family, rape goat, everything. Even if you have cow of your own, they will even rape the cow. By the way, they sleep with cow. Cow is their wife, husband and wife. Useless people that don't wanna live a normal life. We Biafrans are normal people. We wanna live a normal life. We wanna be able to have our territory. and invite foreigners to come and do business with us. A genuine business for that matter. Business that we all have a handshake. While both party, we go smiling. And we'll be able to protect their own business. We have our security. We'll be able to protect them. Just like the West. Their security in the West is touched now. My fellow Biafrans, we need to do everything that we can to make sure that our both leaders are released. Our leader Mazin Nambikanu and our Prime Minister. And if we give up, if we surrender, we all remember what happened to Wasuke after all the good work at the time that Wasuke did. Because he resurrected the movement after the Genocidal War. When all his commanders surrendered. Since you already have the eye of Judas Iscariot. Because if have not have his high eyes set on the prize, what he will be when Biafra come? Maybe he want to be this kind of king of Putin or he want to be this kind of president of King Jomhun or the president of China, one-party president or that type of Gaddafi or Saddam Hussein. I don't think he will negotiate with Biafra, with Nigeria and collect whatever they pay him and pay him off. Because he already have greed implanted in him. That is the reason why he went with the offer that Obasan Joe offered. Came short. That can never happen again. We cannot retreat, we cannot surrender. So when our leaders, when they hear we are doing what we supposed to do, that will give them the courage, the spirit to keep fighting on. Just few months ago, we have those that plant cool to sabotage this great movement. And they are fighting among themselves again. What a shame! In two days' time, there's this lady that used to be the European rep that can't even deliver. As a European rep, she not able to deliver. From Netherlands, bring the breakdown from Netherlands. What have Netherlands contribute in the past one year? It's nothing to write about. As EU rep as well, can't even deliver. And she says she's coming to S to run her garden market in two days' time. To talk about what? Shame unto all of you, war unto you evil people and Korba. This pain that you all are causing us. And we all know the power of media. No country in the world can succeed without their media outlet. Media, they are the intermediary between the people and the government. That's why here in America, we have this that we call a press, press conference night. Which the Congress of the United States of America, or you call it the government of America, when they wine and dine with the press. They crack joke, talk about things, what is going on. That's why any president in the world or Prime Minister, wherever they go, they go with the media team, they go with press. Because it's the press or the media, they the one that pass the message to the citizens. So all you are independent media that are passing the wrong information, wrong message, destroying the mind of Biafra. People from funding their freedom, it will never be well with you and your entire family. Because we are fighting for survival. This is not time for political correctness. You might say, why Mazio Getukun Kire as acting Prime Minister laying cause? Yeah, say cause that will liberate our land. We are laying cause for the evil ones, subotwa, the devils. For them to go not to die in peace. Die and rotting. Because if they don't get out of our way, they will keep destroying our freedom, they will keep setting us back. Because media is very powerful. And all the bloggers that are lying against us, destroying the mind of Biafrans to support their freedom. You all will suffer. You and your generation will suffer till eternity. Everything good that God create will work against you. Have a sleepless night, sleepless dream, bad dream, every evil will visit you. Evil people! You call yourself you a content creator, using it to destroy Biafra. While you are destroying Biafra, people are dying at a key point, all of a car here move. Because of your evil action and you ask us to pray, a good prayer for you, you go to hell, evil people. Jesus Christ was said, stand, get away from me. All you evil people, get away from us. You all can relocate with the Boko Haram, ISIS, go and live with them. They give only luck, unisunurun, to never be well. There is a need for us to fund our freedom. If you don't fund your freedom, they will kill us all. We have enemies surrounding us. We have countries that don't want us to be free. Country number one like the Britain, the satanic Britain. Britain is supposed to be the number one terrorist of this earth. They have destroyed too many lives, they have killed too many lives, too many people. They have killed over 5 million of Biafran. They don't want us to be free. Iran don't want us to be free. Saudi Arabia, Egypt, I can go on the list. It's intense. If they don't want you to be free, my fellow citizens, don't you want to be free? Do you want to grant all these evil countries that have colluded to prevent you from being free? Do you want to grant them their wish? It's not just about the resources. Apart from the resources, it's who you are as a people as well. Because you are good people. Because you are one. But if you go to Dubai today, you don't go there with terrorism. You don't go there to destroy, to steal, to be a liability. You go there with a boost to their economy. You blend with their community. If possible, you learn their language, you speak their language. You do business in their community. You strive, you compete. We all remember what happened in Germany. One of the key factor when Hitler looked at how the Israelites are doing in Germany, most of the businesses are owned by them and ordered. Bless people, I bless people. We are not looking for Biafran that will come tomorrow and Biafran will be the best, best country on earth. We are looking for Biafran that will compete. Biafran that would be like the rest, like America, Dubai, China, Hong Kong, Singapore and others. Not a Biafran that will say, oh, because Biafran is not, not free. We want to control the world. We want to be leader of the world. Everything must be Biafran. We want a Biafran that will believe and let live. You do what is right, we will do what is right. When we do business, we have a fair handshake. We don't try to rip you off and we not allow you to rip you off. Would be a Biafran that when we come to you, will respect you, respect your country. Not have to rip you off. It will be about your country first when we come to your country. If we are in Dubai tomorrow, it will be about Dubai first. But when you come to Biafran land, it will be about Biafran first before your country. My fellow citizens, if you fund your freedom and be free, do you have anything to lose if you fund your freedom? You have nothing to lose. Rather, you have a lot to gain. You will enjoy the goodies from the land of Biafran. You will have better life. The whole world will respect you. The whole world want to come to Biafran because of the security in Biafran. Because of the good thing that we enjoy in Biafran. But now, today, tell me how many countries that want to do business with Nigeria? Over 90% have rejected Nigeria. Just less than a week. The Canadian government, they have detonated APC and PDP, a terrorist organization. That tells you that Nigeria is a terrorist country. And we know, United States of America, this year they have making a lot of progress, lot of move. Trying to put Nigeria where they belong as a terrorist organization. Seeing all this that is happening, are you not yet convinced that Nigeria is gone? And seeing the progress of the Biafran people, which when our Prime Minister was here with Briggy initiate in Washington, seeing the progress coming from Washington, which we have a great lobby, Moran Global Strategies, led by Jim Moran, which Elias is overseeing, seeing the progress from Washington, are you not convinced? Even if you are Thomas, you want to see before you believe. Haven't you seen enough? If that don't convince you that we are progressing, that Biafra is here, what else we convince you? And if what is happening in Biafran land did not convince you, tell you the reason why we need to leave the country called Nigeria. The way the Nigerian terrorist military and the terrorists that have colluded with the Islamization agenda, the way they are massacring Biafrans, killing Biafrans, burning Biafran's houses, that don't, that convince you that it's time for us to go? I hope I hope that alone will make you think twice. The reason why you should fund our freedom, fund your freedom, so we can chase these people out of our land. My fellow citizens, it breaks my heart when I see some of these subotwas, the illegitimate governors and senators parading themselves. Very soon they will be running, they won't see any way to run to. If we don't catch them alive, we will deal with them alive. They have killings in thousands. And we deserve to kill them back. All the illegitimate governors, senators, leave Biafran land. If you don't want to be part of Biafra, leave us alone. If we catch you, if we are about to lay our hand on you, we will do it. We are not hiding, saying it. Because when you was killing us, when they were killing us, when they colluded with the Nigerian terrorists, they did not hide. It's out there in public. Hope was a demon bombing Biafran's innocent citizens' house. The terrorists of Nigerian military burned our houses, bombed our people. They did not hide it. Just because BBC of evil entity called Britannic Satanic refuse to report what is happening in Biafran land because they are evil, fake news. What about CNN? They are everywhere, every country in the world. Useless shithole, gutter media news outlet called CNN. How many times have CNN report what is happening in Biafran? Fake news. And you as a Biafran that are supposed to be independent media, that are supposed to be a blogger, a content creator, why can't you use that as a content? Let the rest of the world know what is happening. Instead of finding how to bring Mazio Getukun Kire down, bring Briggy down, bring our Prime Minister down, our leader Mazin Nambikanu down, or destroy what we are doing. All you evil people that have come to fight against Biafra, we have no rest. No peace for the wicked. Yes, now I remember this Bible quote. The Bible holy book of God said, there shall be no peace for the wicked. All you subotwas, all you evil people, all the countries that have colluded to work with the Nigerian terrorist states. It don't matter what country it is. There will be no peace for that country. That country will be Islamized. That country will face the wrath of Chukwuegbe Biaman. We face the wrath of the God who created heaven and earth. If we can't do it, we believe we have somebody at the higher power, higher authority, who created us to be as a people. All of you countries that have colluded to fight against Biafra, we have no peace. Do you see the reason why United States of America have to take a decisive action over Iran? Iran sponsor too many terrorists all everywhere around the world. They have processes everywhere. And they go straight to hammer the wicked that have come to kill, destroy other country. Prevent the flow on the international waterways. On the international waterways. There shall be no peace for the wicked, says the book, the Holy Bible, the Book of God. Even those that read Quran, they acknowledge the Bible. Or they will tell you the Bible is corrupted, but they acknowledge the Bible. The Bible said, "There shall be no peace for all you wicked, in the way, all you cheaters, see titles." "There shall be no peace for you and your household." "All you egos, there shall be no peace." "All you fake pastors, fake reverends, fake bishop." The Bible that we all read said, "There shall be no peace." All you that have come to destroy Briget. There shall be no peace from a man mad and and you're here to independent media, all of you. Leave God people Biafra alone. This pain have gotten to our bone marrow. My people are being killed everyday. Everywhere in Biafra land is bleeding. And for you, Biafra in the homeland. Running around, still thinking about twenty twenty seven. Don't let the generational curse follow you. There will be no election in Biafra land. On our campaign. They are the one causing those despair. Biafra is already redyced. And there is this fool that have the picture of our leader Mazin Nnamdi Kanu, using it to campaign. There will be no peace. Thank God, that my Bible said that there will be no peace for the wicked. I'm not the one saying it. The book, the Holy Book said. There will be no peace for subordinates, because subordinates are the one dragging us back. And for those that we can hold accountable, we will hold them accountable. We will. It's a promise, my fellow Biafrans. Next month is September. September next month, we have a good, good news coming from Washington. We have a lot that will be coming from Washington. I can't wait in few weeks. And remember, put our leader, our prime minister in your prayers, our leader Mazin Nnamdi Kanu. And especially our prime minister, next month. The Finnish Authority will be coming with their verdict. And we believe will be positive that will favor us. We appreciate if the Finnish Authority do what is right. If they don't, there will be no peace for those that are fighting against Biafra. Biafran people, we don't ask much. We just want to be free. Want to live a normal life. Want to coexist with our neighbor. Want to live in this beautiful world that God created. Want to be proud of God's creation. In history of mankind, Biafran people have never invaded any country. Biafran people have never terrorized any country. Biafrans have never been a liability to where any country, wherever they go. Rather, they contribute to the community they find themselves. I'm happy, I'm a Biafran. I'm a proud Biafran. We leave Biafra, die as a Biafran. And we also encourage the United States of America, the leader of the free world, to do what is right. We have no right to condemn them. We don't see any reason. We know their hand is full. We can see what is happening this week. The president of the free world having meetings with world leaders. Showing leadership. Trying to see whatever America can do to stop all the wars around the world. To bring peace to the Middle East, to Asia. And between Ukraine and Russia. We also appreciate the fact that they have acknowledged Nigeria. It's a country of particular concern. A country that I kill it on. And we want them to act very fast about the case of Biafra. And Nigeria. And also to intervene in our leader Mazin Nnamdi Kanu case, actually it's not our leader Mazin Nnamdi Kanu case, it's Biafran case. Because when they hold our leader Mazin Nnamdi Kanu, they hold the entire Biafra. When we say they kidnapped him from Kenya, they kidnapped Biafra, because he represent Biafra. And we also encourage United States of America to look into our prime minister Mazie Samunheba. Who reside in Finland. Also intervene. Sunshine Finland, they refuse to release him. Sunshine Nigeria, harder, harder. Just the same way America promised to Sunshine Russia. They shouldn't exempt Nigeria. Nigeria kill more innocent citizens more than any country in the world. United States of America, leader of the free world. Step up. We Biafrans believe in you. We believe in your leadership. And please, every Biafran need to tag. United States, if you follow any Congress, tag the White House, tag every US official. About. All those former presidents, governors, senators that have governed. The country called Nigeria before. All of them that reside in United States of America, please, they need to look into them. Like Obian, Obiano or whatever, I think, former governor of Anambra. Obiana, a living in Atlanta, Georgia. After killing Biafrans in Biafra land. He found a safe heaven. To run to America. To live a better life, better, where America have good security, good healthcare system and order. These are governors, when they were governor in Biafra land, they did not help the citizens of Biafra. Rather, the money that was allocated for Biafran people. What do they do with it? They spend one percent. And they loot, they keep the rest to themselves, ninety nine percent. All they do is to loot. The money they're supposed to use. To develop the community. They kept that money for themselves. So, some of them have houses that worth millions. Here in United States of America, we encourage US to launch serious investigation about these individuals. That have destroyed the Biafran land, destroyed the Biafran people. And after making us join, they will use the money, they will run abroad. And forgotten. That the same great country called America, once upon a time, they fought for their freedom to be free. Instead of these former governors, presidents, senators. Fighting for the freedom of their people, they even decide to kill their people. For their own benefit, to slave their people. We encourage United States of America to launch special investigation about. All the former governors that have governed that country. All the former senators, presidents. Fellow Biafrans, please, I think we end from here. I have something very important that I need to attend to. Place your freedom is in your hand. No one will give you your freedom. America will not give you your freedom. Russia will not give you your freedom. China will not give you your freedom. For those that want to run to Russia. Because we are not running to Russia. We believe in American leadership. None, no country in the world will hand over your freedom. They will only recognize you, support your effort. Support your braveliness. That's all they will do. They will even admire you. When they see what they want to, they will admire you and talk about you. Even write a book about how Biafra deal with Nigeria. We need to deal with Nigeria, crush Nigeria like never before, burn Nigeria down. Disassemble Nigeria, cripple Nigeria, if they don't let us go. According to the Holy Book. When the Egyptians refused to let the Israelite go, all the first son born of the Israelites, we strike to death. If Nigeria refuse to let us go, calamity will be further. How will that happen, my fellow citizens? You know what to do. Pierre Hadou here. All the subordinates will ever come on our way, deal with that person. If you don't, they will swallow you. They will kill you alive. They will behave you, cut your hand, your arms off. They already doing it. Just look at the image coming from Biafra land. You will see how the Nigerian terrorists. In military uniform, burning Nigerian, Biafran houses, burning innocent Biafrans, killing innocent Biafrans. You will see how the Islamist jihadist terrorists full of knee has men. Killing Biafrans. That is why we need to fight back and we need to do that before it's too late. No campaign in Biafra land, no election in Biafra land, and for us to stop it. We're citizens of Ahaouhou and we're citizens of Biafra. Something we all will do collectively. And all other states like Ohamadike that are still doing tombor tombor, you all need to stop. Follow those that know, follow the government that will give us our freedom. Stop following somebody who work with Nigeria, a spy, a subordinates. Ngozi Rabezi promise you all that before the end of this year, she already negotiate with some airline. That we catapult, like somebody like, I'm not going to put in a doctor, because I think that man, he bought that title from. From that zoo called Nigeria, because zoo is a scam place where people buy, buy their resort or title. Our farmer, Diane, I hope all of you are ready for the fly. I don't know if Ngozi Rabezi is going to, is going to employ or hire Ellen Oneyema airline to fly you all to Nigeria. Ngozi Rabezi promise all of you that are following her that this year, she will catapult all of you back to Nigeria. Are you all ready? Next month is September, we have your few months to go. And very soon, she said, the Biafran currency will be out. When that currency out, I don't know how many countries that have. If that is high work, how many country you would trade it with? I love it, you be that. All the fake promises, just to keep herself relevant in the struggle. That she have come to destroy this great movement. She have come to destroy our freedom. And all of you are still following her. Please, my fellow citizens, don't follow her so she won't mislead you and drag her to the pit. And for the good plotters that have failed, Imam Madhu and his group. Have colluded with the fearless media team and the ho- the hozzler's media team. Independent media bloggers, all of these useless people. After you all have failed, they are now fighting themselves again. It's just the beginning. All of you will suffer. Biafra is here. Please fund your freedom. Thank you from here. They won't.
They won't, they won't, APM, they won't, they won't, they won't, they won't, they won't. We call on our honorable Emileke Yorane, over to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, my Minister of Information. I, I love that speech by, oh, by the way, I'm, I'm, I'm still at work. And. Yeah, I'm still at work and I, I have to clap for that speech. It was a wonderful speech. And greetings, my APM. I also salute all our leaders. Mazin Nnamdi Kanu and my prime minister Mazie Samunheba. And also remember our eternal leaders in General Juku and General Fion. I. I say, Ahaouhou has done wonderful and I salute the members of the Ahaouhou state. Who represented in this occasion. And I am at work right now, so I can, I'm not going to take so much time. So if you allow me, I'll stand on the existing protocols. And now, remember, I was doing. I was. I started on, you know, contributing by invoking the names of certain states in certain regions. And I think I'll go to the southern region of Biafra. Which includes EPE, I hope I'm pronouncing it right, EPE. Branham, Aubian, Ahawada. Iwonroha, Iwane, Itayanang and the Kua. And on behalf of Ahaouhou and Bridge USA North and South. I contribute a hundred a gemma to pick up the collar and a hundred a gemma for the speech. And I, I thank everyone that's making efforts to donate and fund our freedom. Thank you very much. And I will send you, I'll send you the receipt to my Minister of Information, Mazie Akwawa. to my Minister of Information Mazze Akwawa. Okay?
Thank you, Honorable Rep. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Deu, please, anyone that tries to make payment on the website or with the Stripe link and then is not going through or having difficulty, don't worry, just wait after like some hours you try again. Because we are still working on something there. Thank you. Okay, we have a CK. CK, over to you. Yohanis up CK.
Yeah, good evening, my people. Deu. All protocol observed. Before I proceed, APM, I just have one question to ask you before I proceed, please. Before I make my own, pick my own collar. Now on that this thing is going this way and you have created your own account and your own website, how do you explain to Biafrans?
You know, you know, you know why I muted you?
Oh, no, no, I need to answer this question, please.
You will answer him, you will answer him.
You took him out already?
No, no, I'm not taking him out. You will answer him.
And then, yeah, then he finish.
Yes. He will be here, he will be here for you to respond to him. The reason why I muted you CK because you said APM open his own account and website. That alone makes us to understand where you are and who you are and where you're coming from. You are the, the set of people that will go out and say Simon Eba, open accounts and collect money. Yes, that is the same thing that you have just said now. So APM, you can address the nonsensical human being.
Let, let him finish everything. Let him speak. Let's just, let him finish.
You still want him to speak on this?
You know, Sonny, this is how things work.
But don't, don't, but I don't address Sonny.
APM, just I respond to his nonsense. Don't, don't. I'm not going to allow him to stay here again and be talking nonsense. Address the nonsense that he has brought up so that those that are listening will go and learn.
He haven't faced, let him finish what he's saying.
He's, he's here to cause, he's, he's not ready to speak. He just want to start insulting people.
Sonny, I'm not here to insulting you, please. I'm not here to say. If I go wrong, you direct me. If I ask question, if I go wrong, you direct me. That is how our leader Mazin Namdekanu do it. That is why APM also do.
The majority that is speaking, what you say your name is?
CK.
Okay, CK, okay. So I can address you properly. Go ahead, I'm listening.
So now, because the government that we believe on is the Brigi government, which we know that is the government that everybody follows. Now we are having misunderstanding. Why the government that also make you a P, APM, that tell you to step down to make sure that they resolve the office and make things, let us move together. And you started like, you look like you are fighting for the power, making problem with it. Instead of you as the government to make you as an APM, you step down and we fix things together as a government.
Mazze, more team now, let me address him first.
APM, you really have time for this kind of idiot here. You have time.
CK, if that is your real name, if it is not, then whoever that just speak now. If you don't, I don't believe, I'm not, I'm not going to say that you don't know what you're doing, you do. People like you, you are people like, or one of those that going to partake from this cause. Evil. The evil that you people have bring to this struggle is not about misinformation. You people are evil. The account you're talking about is not one month old account, two, three, one year account. Even when our leader was here, it's the same account. Nothing have changed. Nothing have changed from the one is the same thing. You people are so evil like somebody like this CK. You just, you're one of those that are destroying what we are doing. You're one of those that are called this great cause we follow. Nothing have changed from when our leader was here till now. Nothing have changed. And you say I create my own government. I did not. I'm still the Brigi APM. And you said these people that put me there. It's Biafra people that put me there. The people you talking about, all the time that we have find ourselves in difficulties, how many of them solve the problem? The same people we are there when we have difficulties before our re-declaration. When I call a meeting, how to solve the problem? How many of them step up? How many of them? Way before I was nominated and voted in as the APM, the people in question don't have the power to expel, expunge me out from Brigi. That is not how government work. The people in question, do you know how many meetings I have have with them? How many have you have? I know them. I know who they are. I know what they capable of. You don't know them. I know them more than you do. And any Biafra that is listening to me, not when our Prime Minister comes out tomorrow, all of you will be making a U-turn, behaving like it's all okay. I did not know. Some of you know what you are doing. Some of you just want to destroy this great cause. Some of you are just being paid working with the Nigerian terrorists. You want to come here, say the people. Who is the people? It's Biafra that voted me in. Now that they have planned their coup, they went in with whatever they call themselves. Who is their leader? Why haven't a man madu make himself the APM? Why haven't this chairman that even if she dress as a woman, she can't even look like a woman, ugly subaltern? Why didn't she make herself PM, APM or her husband? Why haven't they do somebody as their APM? Over to Mosna. You're talking about they make me. You should be ashamed of yourself. And I believe if people that know, know you know who you are, they will know they are dealing with a Nick Campu, somebody with no brain. United States of America, you have the presidency, you have the, all the committee from Congress and all. The Congress power, they don't have power over the government of America. A committee, there's no way in the world a committee is greater or higher than than the government of that country that institute that committee. And at the same time, the people in question, who even authorize them? Do you think our Prime Minister even validate them on the nonsense they, they do? Anyway, but for you to open your mouth, I open my own account, I did not open any of my own account. The same account that we'll be using even when our leaders are here is the same account, nothing changed. They're the one that went and opened their own account. And they hijack our website. When they hijack the website, you expect a dono wuda manipulator liar old fool to be in charge of what? She's not even in Brigi government? She's not being restated? Who restate her without my knowledge? She will be the one to be in the account? Or do you expect the woman called Ruby Nadi that's in People's Club of Nigeria to manage it? You CK to be ashamed of yourself? You a disgrace? You are insulted to manhood? At your age, I believe you overthrew Biafra. People like this are people that are, you, you say you have a man, you, you have a son or is he a son or a girl or a boy? You should be ashamed of yourself. Please. Anyone that know what is right, do it. And disease from evil. And the CK that was saying I should step down then, now that they have moved on. CK, you go and be their APM. You believe? Go and be. Contest, go and be their leader. Fool is a fool. These are people our leader Mazin Namdekanu said I work for poor guy. You just here to run your mouth up like you are with Brigi. You believe in Brigi here, just who you try, you think you trying to impress with your falsehood and propaganda? Honorable Minister of Information, please go, I think we have hands here and I think it's time for you kick the kick CK out. He already got the message. Shame unto you and your subaltern, P group. Every cause I lay on these subalterns, we follow people like CK. Because these are unrepentant Biafrans that want to destroy what we are doing. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, APM. Wisdom, over to you, Yohanis up.
Okay. Good evening, my APM. Good evening, Sonny. Yeah. Good evening, Sonny, my senior comrade. Good evening. Uh, BMO, Uchechi, there. Good evening to you all. Good evening, my senior comrade, COA. Yes, it's late over here. You know, you know that very well. So better. I said I must be here. So without wasting time, I am supporting the Ahaouhou State with the sum of 2,000 AJ and I'm using 3,000 AJ to support the speech of our APM. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Machunaki. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Deu.
Yeah.
Uh, BMO, Uchea BMO, over to you, sir.
Good evening, my honorable Information Minister.
Deu, nice.
Uchea, about our son in Joko. Good evening, my able APM. His Excellency, Chief Ogichuku Kabna Nkwele.
Deu, good evening from here. Deu.
Good evening for.
Nah, nah, not good. Deu.
Good evening to all genuine Biafrans. All of us are freedom. About where is this three weeks now? Not in my best, but however, even today I find it difficult to call it this zoo because I I just realized, right to realize for the day here where I am. But the voice of my APM just wake me from sleeping. Uh, please. Great and lovely genuine source that does of Biafra. Before I proceed, I want to let a cause as usual. Since my life, I have not let a cause to people. But for two weeks now, I have attended it. It's not by my power, but by the power of Almighty Elohim. To show the subalterns that it's a sin to be a subaltern of his, his own or his fellow Uber Bay. My Information Minister, please don't remove your CK. The cause I come today, right now, to lay on this person. I want every genuine Biafra here to say is approved. Every dead, any person answered, whether if he's real dead or fake dead, that name belongs to him or her. CK, you have here spoken. And you said that your name is CK? And we agree with you that you are CK. That is your dead. Even if it's fake, that is your voice. It's your tongue. The tongue is more powerful than every other thing. Every human being can think of. You call your name CK. And you know what you are doing. You are one of the people and you came here to distract the freedom of your people that you believe that break freedom and you need it and your people need it. I'm laying a cause from now. CK, your head, your family, your generation to come, your entire generation. In the mighty precious holy name of Elohim, the God of love, the God of freedom, the God of Biafra, I lay cause on you, CK, that you have answered, that is your name, when you have spoken here today. You know your lies. You know that you know what you are doing. That you are trying to sabotage the freedom of over 80 millions of Biafrans. Start from today. Your life will never be the same again. In the mighty name of Elohim, I cast on you, your family, everything that you love in your life, everything that makes you happy will be a catastrophic in your life. Evil, dead, sicknesses, every type will be your portion. You and your entire family, your entire generation. Why I include your generation, your family is because they know what, at what you are doing. Sabotaging the life of over 80 millions of innocent people of God. It's a sin. They couldn't even advise you. Start from this moment. Whatever you eat, whatever you drink, the air you breathe, this ground you touch your leg, wherever you are, you are your entire family. You will be contaminated by every type of sicknesses. I said this. I said this. And I declare it. In the mighty precious holy name of Elohim of the people of Biafra, innocent Biafrans. That is also against the subotwas. Of Biafra. And so shall it be. Until you come out. And confess. That you are sins. Everything that you have said here today. Is obvious. And so shall it be. In the mighty name of Elohim. To Jesus Christ, the Israel. Of whom. I have believed and trusted. And I say. He said. He said.
He said.
Four market days. Never come to an end. It remains four market days. Of the Holy Land. Of Elohim. Which is Biafra land. And so shall every subotwa. Will be exposing yourself. And the more you are criminal. The more you are receiving. The curse. That will lead you and your entire generation. To Eligree. Thank you very much. My APM. You are the son of your father. You are not chosen by yourself or for anybody, but God Elohim has chosen you. You are the acting Prime Minister of Biafra. Acting on behalf of. Our Ebo Prime Minister Simon Eban Joko. The criminal CRC did not make you APM, Biafrans made you APM. As you just said this right now. If Imam Mahdab, the useless subotwa. In Switzerland. Can make somebody APM. Why can't he make himself APM if he is capable? Why can't the ugly Shoma Ekoma make herself APM? Since she knows everything. Why can't the Obi Obodo? Who cannot even organize. Need the land people to support Biafra. Freedom. APM. Why can't she make herself APM? Is there others? Like Wanda Van Van Van? Like Biafra, you must disunite, said that he is a dog. Not even a mad dog, but a lazy dog. Hungry, hungry dog. Her job is only to chat one word, one word, one. We agree with him for that one. But we know that they are all the same. So CK. Today. You shall. Tell the public exactly how your life starts from today. How it started, how it's moving. This is midnight here where I am. And this is the time. God used to choose those sinners that he punished. That he punished. I think you are unlucky. To enter this. Holy platform, this holy gathering today. You are gone. Your entire generation are gone. And all the blood of your generation, your family is on your head. My APM. Thank you so much. You are doing great. Your speech today is wonderful. Is great, it wakes me from sleeping. As I just said, I'm not around in my base for three weeks now. Most of us who knows. For you, only this your speech. I'm supporting. This Oha Oka today. With fifty AJ ma. My Ebo Information Minister. Will get the receipt. Immediately touch down to my base. Thank you very much. May God Almighty bless you. Continue threatening you. Protecting you, you are going out, you are coming in. Do not worry. About all these subotwas. They are all gone. Just like CRC, the sad and express CRC, the dissolved CRC is gone. So. All, all of them, including the, the USB Nigeria. And honorable Friday that is about now to go to jail. We know that she have already packed a load. But she just continue pretending. To see that if she can lay hand in some pocket of some useless Biafra. All that, those people, they are not even, her supporters are not even Biafrans. Be strong. You have people. You have men. You have rare men and great women. That is here. To assist you. To the victory, to make our Prime Minister Simon Eban Joko. Proud. Thank you very much. Thank you, Biafra, Geno Biafrans. May God Almighty bless every one of you that is dream great here. I love you all. In the name of Elohim. To Jesus Christ our Lord. And I said amen and he said. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Uchea BMO, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Yunis Uchechi, over to you. Your hand is up.
Yes, sir, my hand is up. Uh, Parawa, thank you, thank you very much for giving me the mic. I've come back, I came back for CK or whatever his stupid name is. APM, please sir, allow me to, to lay my own curse on CK. Please sir, I beg you. CK is that idiot that came on Saturday with the name Casey. Now he is not man enough to come back with his real name. CK, you are a coward, I know you are listening. It's your village people, your village people that pushed you to this holy Zoom. To come and collect curse and you're going to get this curse in quantum. Since you have decided to remain a fool for the rest of your life. Since you have decided to carry a curse that will affect your innocent generation yet unborn. You must carry this curse. I am adding another curse to the one that our APM has laid on you. It shall not be well with you. CK, you, you will not see any good thing in your life. May you step down into her ship. May you step down into her attack. Amadja Hakubu Wagidya. You are saying our APM, why did you step down? Step down, Wagidya, may step down, twist your neck. Look at you, a fool, this is a.
If I step on. We hear, we hear carry the mantle, we hear do what I'm doing. Even Imam Mahdab, that fool and. After the nonsense they did, why haven't they led somebody? To lead, last time I think, uh, I heard that during one of their fundraising, he was saying he's. That of their own group. That old fool, people have to be careful, you know, when we. Not, not laying curse because of, uh, we want to lay curse. Right now, we Biafrans, we are being hurt. We are really hurt, you know, it's like we're doing everything we can. The world keep moved and the world expect us to fight hard. Then the Biafrans are supposed to help us to move forward, they are dragging us back. Our people have been killed every day. Our mothers, sisters, they have been raped every day, chased out of their house, burned. Their house get burned, sometimes they burn them inside the house. And they expect us to be political correctness and wake up every day and say hallelujah. Or be happy about it. So whoever that we lay curse against is because we have been, we are, you know, our heart is broken. So and every subotwa, over twenty years, we have not really hold people accountable. This time. Whatever we can lay our hand on, if it, if it is the curse. If it is any logistics, anything that we, we can lay our hand to hold anyone accountable, we'll do it. Because we are fighting for our survivor. We have to survive as a people. But, uh, so it's just heartbreaking that, breaking that you see some people. They reason from their anus. Uh, Imam Mahdab and group. Look at how they're doing, there's this, honorable Minister of Information, can you please play? Where Biafra United is mocking them. The same Biafra United validate them. The same Biafra United they team up with. The same Biafra United, this ugly woman called Shoma. And I look like whatever. Can't even dress like a woman said. The same woman said, they are protesting Biafra United and group. But look at now, the same Biafra United is laughing at them, mocking at them. They are just doing some, you know, have, sometime you have to use your tongue to count your teeth. To, to ask yourself question, are you doing it right? What is going on? The same group that they fought together with the independent media to fight against Bricky. They are divided now and they are fighting themselves. Raf, that, that Raf that cannot even feed himself a beggar. That, you know, very Russian human being over how many years in Dazbora? He can't even take care of himself, all he's do is beg, beg. Very poor Russian. Time is coming when I'm gonna bring more information about how this beggar have begged. To extend that, what he wants. Probably all this while, he's not even happy being the deputy. He want to be the, the, uh, uh, Minister of Information. Not only that, he's jealous. If you allow Raf actually want to be their APM, I think they, they don't want, you know, they don't, they don't allow him or whatever. But all these people are just fake. Instead of them to pray for God to help them, for them, for their life to be better. Raf is very poor. Doing program from his one room, from his kitchen. Somebody like that, he will live and dwell with curse. For the rest of his life, because it's not my saying, that's what the word of God said. The. No peace for the wicked. Any wicked human being on earth. And in Biafra land fighting against us, we have no peace. All of them. All of them that have lied from Rosa, from Adadi, all of them. Uh, Remy Jews that said they pay me two hundred and fifty million, they do this, all is lie, blackmail, propaganda. They can never have peace. Until they will repent, confess. And they will walk towards it. But if that, that might not even solve the problem, but they have to work real hard to undo all the nonsense. If possible to resurrect everyone that they have killed. By their word or they have. Because of their actions. Hundreds of Biafrans have been killed or if not thousands. And they have actually because of their action, a lot of Biafrans refuse to even donate. This fool is asking, talking about account, which account? Account have never changed, the same account. The same account. We have to go get a new website because, because of that, this evil Azubike. 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 Azubike is there fighting for God to bless his family. That blessing Azubike Wada or whatever is looking for from God, he will not receive it. I see the reason why some people are never been blessed. When he cried to me, he talked to me about what going on in his family. And I feel real sorry for him, now I know the reason why he, you know, he, he haven't get that blessing from God. People are wicked, and some of them don't know that they are evil, catch upon them. Thank, sorry, uh, uh, Minister Yunis, you can go ahead from here, please, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Yunis, before you finish, APM requested I play this. To remind Biafrans.
Anything right? Would they go to C R U C Ninkan when Afuno Amama Hanemaze? Nobody knows if they existing. The only one person in the Kruo Kua jail, they have put our gosia somebody by, whoa, 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 on Apple. Nothing to offer. So they have no any other option than to stick there. No option whatsoever. Obukonafamaro. What it takes to fight for freedom because. Amen K and obato B M A peg everybody Anya. Anything right? Would they go to C R U C Ninkan when Afuno Amama Hanemaze? Nobody. Knows if they existing. The only one person in the Kruo Kua jail, they have put our gosia somebody by, whoa, 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 on Apple. Nothing to offer. So they have no any other option than to stick there. No option whatsoever. Obukonafamaro. What it takes to fight for freedom because.
Alright.
So of information, just to complete it. The one Adadiyarama, you know, th- these are people that team up to fight against Bricky with Adadiyarama, the one Adadiyarama. Is calling Imam Mahdab, that old fool out. This Imam Mahdab, ask Imam Mahdab, how many Biafrans from Switzerland? Have he bring into the struggle? Switzerland is a rich country, when you talk about Switzerland. They are really rich. You know, there is a lot of stuff that's supposed to come from Switzerland, even a mass supposed to initiate a liaison office in Switzerland. The same we have, they are powerful, if you don't know. The same we have like in America. Imam Mahdab is supposed to be meeting with some top official from Switzerland. Have you hear any news from Switzerland, one day, one? Remember the same Switzerland, that's where I believe, uh, this head of DOS is, wouldn't know whether if they work together. Please, uh, play this, uh, this one from Adadiyarama, just to complete, uh, support. This is the Biafra unite because they all work together, they know themselves, thank you.
Alright, let me get, uh, the other one. Uh, while I get that, Yunis, yeah, go ahead, finish your submission while I look for the.
Okay, sir, thank you, uh, uh, I'm sorry, am I coming out?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, my APM, so I don't even have much again to say because you have said everything, I'm just so angry, my spirit. And with this anger, God has established whatever curse that has been, have been laid on this platform. It will manifest in the lives of these idiots, fools. These people have caused us a lot of pains. Casey, Casey, that is you, that is this idiot that always go to Wanda Van Van Van's platform, idiots. Why not, why not ask your Van Van Van, why have they refused to make him their Minister of Information? You, you are coming here to ask our APM to step down, step down, step down, may you step down into agony and shame. I know you have not been able to sleep since Saturday, I'm sleep, we continue to elude you. You, you will not, you will look for sleep and you will not find sleep for the rest of your life. Until you make a U turn and, and apologize to our APM and to Biafrans. May the blood of the innocence whom you, your activities, activities have taken on timely. May their blood continue to, to, to cry on your head, on your stupid head. For the rest of your miserable lives. Is it not the same man that you are enjoying, that, that called our, 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 our men criminals? Now she's coming to say, and, and, and they are, they are men, they are men, which they are men? Adadiyarama, I know you are listening. May your life remain miserable, I pity for your children. Your children shall spit on your face. Your children shall crush you, Adadiyarama. Your children shall crush you. Adadiyarama, Adadiyarama, Adadiyarama. And I still discuss with a sum of fifty thousand AJ, again, really, Shunu. Because you have caused Biafrans pain. Thank you very much.
And you know that this group of sabotwas are kicking both from a mouth to all of them without their group. Raf, all of them, they are kicking against our lobby. So they are, they don't even want any positive thing coming from Washington this, without our lobby. What, what, how do, who gonna take us there? So to tell you how evil they are and with this, they are low IQ educated fools. This is not time for political correctness. All these evil sabotwas, I said it, I keep saying it, saying it for the past two weeks, who hold them accountable. Who hold them accountable one way or the other. They will feel, they will pay, they will pay. They would not go for, they will. Maas is sunny. Honorable Sunny.
Okay, Kerry, I change your good document already. Moonge, President of Brigi. Oh, you are a good man, G, number leader. And don't they divide the Alana, don't they divide it go? If a problem man, problem man will lead to divide even again. To the extent that now each person, the major bro, crime minister or whatever. Van Van Van. You know why Njinko will take her and I'll go get her? Because I don't trust him. I don't trust, okay, there's no time to trust that guy. Right from the beginning, all the legend will take her. You have the conference room once, it shows in first again, because my. Most all the money, Anna Porta.
Alright, um, BRGI in New York, over to you. BRGI in New York, over to you. It's not ready. Zoom user, over to you. Zoom user, unmute yourself.
Okay, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Good evening, my Prime Minister, my accent Prime Minister. And Sunny Akbarawa, my brother, good evening. I want to support this great meeting today, though I'm speaking from the homeland from Ogoni. I'll be supporting with three thousand AJ. Then I just want to make a little speech. Because I believe it is time for nonsense to stop. Already, we have already gone through a lot of nonsense. And the cost is not even enough. How wish, it is easier to bring gun and point on their head. Once you make one mistake, you should kill you once. There's none, there's no how to beat around the bush about this. Because right in this homeland, the pains and sorrow that we are going through. I'm not even in the eastern region, which I would say I'm in the Ibo land. I'm not even that side. But this Ogoni path that we are, the hardship and poverty. Not to talk about when you are among, or you are in the process of the place that they are shooting. And people are running, people are like. It's only God that understand the pain because the way we are now, we are even more than beast. Human being, those that doesn't love freedom, they need to be killed. That's the only solution. Then those that love freedom should live and enjoy life. Because these people will not stop until they are dead. They will not stop. You see a grown up man living life as if he doesn't have sense. A grown up man. Ah, I just pity. Thank you. I was, I would, I would send my money to the Lagos liaison. God bless everyone here and protect all and grow your businesses and your job, everything you do. May God guide you all for your good intention towards life.
You say, you say, thank you, thank you, my brother. Um, I would love over to you.
Okay, there were no more Biafra.
Yeah, what?
APM. It's gonna be alright.
There were, there were.
It is going to be alright. It is God's promise. It will be alright. Um, he knows what you need. And he will supply your needs according to his riches. Um, my father, when he was alive, when he gets off, he will say, the pillows are raging in vain, but Christ is the captain of my ship. Right now I have to go do my own work. So I think that's what you will do. It's gonna be alright. On Huku, there won't. I think this is the first, um, town hall for Huku, if I'm not mistaken. So I congratulate you guys. And I hope you continue moving forward. Um, I'm just going to support today's town hall with my little token of thirty AJ. Thirty AJ ma. And I will send the receipt to Minister of Information. There won't.
There were, um, uh, we have an update from. There were, there were.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable case is taking color for a good omen, good omen state, Eden, a good omen, good omen, Afemi, Esan, a good omen, good omen. A total of thirty AJ ma, thirty AJ ma. Thank you, thank you. Alright, we come to Roland F. Roland F. Yannis, over, mute yourself.
If you are US or making donation, just go straight with Israel. Okay, we have a lot of trouble working on.
Honorable Sunny, thank you very much. Thank you for what you stand for. And I appreciate you for what you believe in. Ever since I've gone to Norway, I understand you. And as well confirmed, the genuineness of what you stand for. I've never regret it, the cause you are fighting for. And the same thing applies to our APM. Your tears are our tears. Your strength are our strength. Your weakness are our weakness. But all I have to say is that God is on our side. Except on one clause, what we are doing. Is it against the nature? Is it against the law of universe? Is it acceptable by God? Are we the first to cry for freedom? Even the Israel of God, they cry for freedom. This is midnight here. I'm going to put myself naked. They're not the only one fighting, listening. We are marked in this trace to get freedom. If you don't know it, let a lot of them continue it. We are very, very marked in this struggle. Number one. Because one of the weapon of war is your tongue. One of the powerful weapon of war, there is no army it is. If an army is in the war, if you believe and see, you will be alive and see victory. One way or the other, the supernatural will back up. So we are, we are, we are not, we are not cracking joke here. Enough of all this nonsense. We are in the last lap of having what we are yearning and crying for. Many watch to see what is happening in the realm of the spirit. Then think somebody will come and thinking that no sabotage, what someone can, what we are not privileged to have for all this year. What Oduku couldn't get and access to. Then a man, God planted him there, has the privilege to have access to where I myself cannot enter. Then many different sabotage faces are not crazy jealous about it. And you expect us to be quiet? No. No, we expect, I got just one second. Oh God, the maker of heaven and the earth. For I will lift up my eyes onto the him, for where commit my help. I stand on behalf of God to as many that year, that their blood has never nourished. Just as you look down on earth and you say, King, where is your brother Ebe? I lift up my eyes, oh God, to you, God, the God of the universe, the God that controlled the earth and the heavens. The one that has the power of wings, the one that has the powers of what we can see and that what we cannot see. The one that formed us after his whole image. A man can say he would destroy what you have formed. Oh God, I'm matching this earth is cool with me. It has been very hot to as many that has went down untimely. I am naked just the same way you created me, oh God, to as many that are standing in anywhere you can be, be in homeland, be in exile, be no or unknown, cause be you this day. It shall never be with you. The galaxy will fight you. The moon will fight you. The sun will fight you. The air will fight you. The mother earth will fight you. Whatever that has been turning for good for you will work against you. You will never make it. It is not everyone that make it to Kinaland. It is not everyone that head that the promised land. You will never make it home. In the name of Jesus, I pronounce and I decree. I declare as I have the privilege to meet this servant PM, one day before all this jargon happened. I saw his spirit, he visited me and cried, and I shed tears, I woke up. I use that opportunity with what I have with him in conversation. I decree, declare upon you. In point of contact, you that call yourself CK or whatever, it shall never go with every one of you. Remember you or Rabofuna, you have caused you before now. You are shut down permanently. Permanently you are shut down. And I use this opportunity, oh God, as these men are on ground. They have been crying, they have been fighting. God that has victory, oh God, that has all power of victory in your hand. I lift up the banner of victory as soon, as quick as possible because we are tired. We yearn and we cry, oh God, for what is right. You that fight the fight of the just. You that fight the fight of the helpless. You that fight the fight of the homeless. You that fight the fight of them that are weak. And you said the power of God will be made perfect in our witness. Where is your strength, oh God? Over mankind that you create as a race, existing in the contraption that they forced us against. Oh God, enough is enough. We can't continue like this. Arise, oh God, and show yourself strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. A BM, BM, over to you. Thank you, Roland F. And please, we are ending up, we are ending up, so, thank you.
Thank you, my, if, uh, Able Information Minister, she, uh, but I was only joking. Uh, please, uh, uh, for CK, uh, uh, now, please, everybody to forget him, he's gone and he's totally gone. Then do not add or do not minus the cost. That is a, a form of, of example to others also. That is coming to sabotage, who think that they are here to destroy the progress of the freedom of Biafrans. God Almighty, Elohim have already accepted that, and he said, already said yes. Please do not add anything again for that CK, he's already gone. He woke up first by himself and there have been no forgiveness for the sabotage us. So my APM, your excellency.
They were, they were.
Good news is coming. Make my words, like our able prime minister, his excellency Simon, everybody used to say. You will be invited in the White House. Very, very, very soon. On the table. With the war leader. His excellency, Donald Trump. I'm not a prophet. I'm only a human being who believe in God. And that I don't dream in hell. But whatever comes to my dream. Comes to reality. And everyone who knows me. Knows that it's always like this. And when I said it, that I saw in the dream. It doesn't take time. It appears and accurate. Biafrans are going to know this time. That you have done the real that, that our able prime minister. And our leader Martin and Canon. Have been praying and fighting for. You are the person that God has chosen. That God have chosen to make it possible. And we have done it. Biafrans, when I say hear my voice, you all know my voice. I won't say more than that. But I'm very happy. I'm very, very happy because it, it is done, God have done it. Through you. APM Ogechukwu Kere, the great son of the land of Biafra. The servant of Martin Simon Ebanjoku, the able prime minister and the Unyendu Martin and the Canon. Abra was only, you are a hero. Thank you, I'm going to bed right now with the happiness. It is done, but all the sabotage us. The cause that we have presented before God Almighty on their head. Has been accepted. We will hear the cry, yeah, the cries of the enemies. We will hear the cries of the sabotage us. Majority of them have already started crying and they will cry and cry. And we will be washing them and analyzing them. Thank you so much. May God continue to bless and strengthen every one of you here, genuine Biafrans. Lovely Biafrans, the people of Elohim. I bless you all. It shall be where with every one of you and every one of you will see Biafra enjoy it. Thank you, in the name of Jesus Christ, of Nazareth and Biafra land and the universe, the holy son of God. And I say, he say, he say, he say, he say, amen, 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 in the language of God, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, BMO, thank you, thank you. Victor Nonsor, over to you. Victor Nonsor, admit yourself.
Alright, uh, they won't. Thank you very much, though I came in later, I apologize for that due to my schedules. But I'm very, very happy that I am able to come in, so I understand that we are running up. So, but it doesn't really matter how long or how many sabbaths we have. So I'm just only here to encourage each and every one of us. That that should not be an excuse. That should not be. An excuse for any one of us from not doing the needful. Only word I have here is just ways of encouragement for each and every one of us to continue doing the good work that we have been doing. Those are, those that are called know themselves. So please, I encourage each and every one of us, do not be, do not be fance in your strength. Apply your critical thinking, this is the time, this is the hour. Thank you very much, each and every one of us. I'm going to support today's meeting, this money. Uh, with twenty a gemma, thank you very much. I will send the receipt straight away through the Stripe website, thank you.
Thank you, Wanchinaga, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate everyone that have made it to. Our Oku State Town Hall meeting. And we look forward to see more of you when we call you up again. And we are very happy that um. Our palm wine, which we came with to this town hall meeting. Was well served. So if you did not tap from this palm wine, it means you came late. And also you miss a lot. But you can as well um contact our honorable COA later on. So that um you can see how we can package your own palm wine and send over to you. Thank you so much to everyone. As we live here, we are not living Biafra, we are living the Zoom. Continue doing what you have to do so that Biafra will be fully restored. I don't know if um our Parawa Atem is here. To give us a closing prayer. And a closing remark. Parawa Atem, are you here? ACOA, are you here? Okay, I think network has done back to them. So in that spirit of the day, I appreciate all of you. And we say, thank you so much for making it to our Oku State. And see you all again tomorrow. They will, they will, they will to everyone, they will, they will, they will, they will.